Greg, are we beginning?
I thought the meeting started at 7:30.
Does it? Yeah, I thought it started, we had moved them to seven.
I thought that was just the last meeting. It's on the calendar.
The agenda said 7:30. I didn't look at the agenda because I thought we were having them all at 7:30. Okay, see you in a half hour.
We'll be all back, bye.
Stuart, did you want to test your mic? I'll allow you to talk for a moment. Okay, it seems to be able to get you to speak. You managed to call in.
It says unmute now, how about now?
Okay, yep, we hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. See you at 7:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I need to start with. You can.
Greg, are we live on LMC?
I'm actually doing that right now.
Okay.
Okay, we're live.
I think I'm in. And we are live on. Okay, we have a quorum, but we should wait a couple minutes, see if anyone else is joining. I thought, I saw Doug on, maybe he left until, I guess he'll be back.
Yep, Doug and Abby are on now.
Yep, okay. Okay, so Greg, do you want to open up and explain how this works? I guess, welcome to the May 7th, 2020, meeting of the Mamaroneck Zoning Board of Appeals. Greg Cutler, the village planner, will explain the process for this Zoom meeting.
Thank you. So what we'll be doing is we'll just go through the agenda. If you're on one of the consultant teams, when we get to your agenda item, I'll ask that you raise your hand so I can unmute you. And then when it goes to public hearing, we'll ask the public to do the same thing, just raise your hand and you can unmute yourself. If you have any difficulties connecting, you can send me an email at gcutler@vomny.org. That's G.
Greg.
G C U T. you can send me an email at gcutler@vomny.org. That's G-C-G-C-U-T-L-E-R@vomny.org. And I will make sure that you can connect or figure something out. I'm getting a hand raised here since it's BOMNY. Sorry, who's that? But that's basically it.
Okay, before we start the agenda, I want to take up something which is meeting time. Members, I had thought that we had discussed we wanted to do this at 7:00. I guess that wasn't clear for this night, so I want to confirm, do you want to, for as long as we're doing Zoom meetings, which will, I'm sure, be at least the next meeting, and I don't know about going on after that. So do you want to begin them at 7:00 or 7:30? Let's just decide now so that it's, we announce it. I'm happy with 7:00, so.
7:00 works for me.
I'm fine with either 7:00 or 7:30.
Okay, Abby and Greta?
Yeah, me too. I can do either.
Greta?
Greta, your mic's off.
You need to unmute yourself.
I unmuted her.
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
She said, "Fine with either."
Okay, so then, I'd rather just do it earlier, and hopefully we get out of here earlier. So let's start, so the next one will be at 7:00 o'clock. And I'm going, if we have any more Zoom meetings, they'll be at 7:00. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now to begin the agenda. So the first thing is, we had talked some time ago about, so we're talking about now the submittal process, just in terms of timing. And we had talked a while ago about limiting and setting a kind of a date at which people had to submit their comments or applications. And I had a thought subsequent to that, which got sort of reinforced in this process, which is that while we have the deadlines by which applicants need to submit, I do not think we should have a deadline by which members of the public need to submit. Ideally, we want as much public input as we can, and so I would like there not to be a limit on members of the public. I did ask for, I did try to find out what other locations did. I only got the answer from two places, and both of them allow members of the public to comment up until the meeting, because of course they could always just come to the meeting. So that is what I propose. If anyone, unless anyone has an objection, that's the way I'd like to proceed.
Okay with me.
Well, I guess my, I guess my concern about it is that if an applicant has something that he or she would like to submit, and it's past the deadline, then what do we do with that, you know, item on the agenda? Do we just continue it for the next, next meeting?
If their application is complete, so if it's the first, if their application is complete, then we have the hearing anyway.
No, the applicant is, I want to submit.
Then they should be submitting it by the deadline.
The applicant wants to submit something more.
Then they should submit it by the deadline, too. There's no reason that the applicant, who knows the time and should find out the time, doesn't have to submit by the deadline. I see no reason to give an extension to applicants.
I'm saying if the applicant has come up with information that they think is relevant, for instance, you know, for Brixmore, you know, there's an updated traffic study, or there's anything.
Then we.
Are we saying that that information we're not going to consider?
No, we're saying that they can't submit it for that meeting. It means that if they want us to consider something, we just have to continue the hearing. Whether we open the hearing and have it without or not, we can't start looking, otherwise if we let people submit things after, then applicants are going to submit things as late as possible, because then they have no incentive to submit by the deadline. And that's just not acceptable. We've had problems with people, applicants. So that's, so I think that applicants should be bound by the deadlines, and the public should not, yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Can I, because when public submits something, Betty Ann, when do you add it to the public record online? When the public submitting something, an applicant is, an application is open for more than one meeting? And you, somebody. At what point do you put it, do you add it to the agenda items online that people can find?
I usually add the documents once I receive them. The, the primary issue, I believe, is that there's a span of time between the time the deadline ends and the agenda actually goes live on the village website. And the agendas go live the Friday before the meeting. And so it gives the public the weekend to kind of view everything before the meeting.
But unfortunately for us, it means that then the public wants to submit it after the weekend. And so I know for me, working normal hours during the week, it makes it more difficult for me when I get it during the week. Not saying I can't, but also I wondered when, when the public or somebody sends more information in, do you send that to the applicant so they're aware of what's been sent in?
Yes.
So this is what, I think sometimes the applicant might want to respond when it could be the building department is something, something new in, when it's, the public has sent something new in. The applicant might want to respond, and it would be in our interest to take it before the meeting so that we don't prolong it, that we don't get it until the meeting happens, and we didn't even get to see it. So I think sometimes the applicant, there's a deadline, but they're actually responding to the materials and arguments that have coming in after the application was closed.
Well, if we look at it by time, the agenda comes up, the, I disagree. To me, if the applicant wants to respond, they respond at the meeting. And if they think they need to respond more, then we continue the hearing. I, I just don't like the idea that the applicant starts submitting. I mean, if you think about when we get applicants that submit, a lot of times applicants may be, public may not be supported by an attorney, an applicant maybe, so the applicant sends in a, what, a public sends in a one-page comment, and we get a 15-page response memo from the applicant. And, and, you know, that's fine. Applicants should absolutely have that right to do it, but they shouldn't have the right to do it at the last minute. If they want us to have a 15-page read their memo, then they'll ask us to continue the hearing so they can respond. Or they respond verbally at the hearing, and then they continue it. We, you know, we, we have to have, we can't, well, it depends. I think we have to have a standard and follow it up with it, and so.
I feel like we should, I mean, of course, we can't prevent anybody from putting in an open, an open hearing. If they want to submit something, we will accept it. It just seems in our interest to accept it whenever it was wanting. That we really appreciate it at a certain time. There's a good chance that this delay, and, and we will have to continue this at another month. But there is a chance that if we get it in advance, we don't have to keep prolonging the hearing. So that's all I feel. I also wonder, Betty Ann, is, is it a hard and fast? Why is the date the Friday before the meeting date? Do you have the material before then, or it's not possible for you to do it sooner than the Friday?
Oh, I certainly have the material before that, because I try to get the agenda items to the board the Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday after that deadline, because it takes a little bit of processing to get everything in order. I do know that at one point, the board was interested in keeping the Monday after the deadline, after the agenda was posted, for public to make their comments, that they had till end of business on the Monday before the meeting. So that gave you whatever comments the public had, if they viewed all the documents over the weekend. It gave them that Monday, and then you'd get those documents on the Monday. And then after Monday, there wouldn't be this influx of documents coming in between Tuesday and Thursday.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
And you're telling the public, the public has possibly only had two days to review an application, and we're not going to consider their applicant, their comment if they can't get it in after only two days of review that requires them to have reviewed it over the weekend. And I don't think that's fair. It's also not, as I said, the little bit I could see was that's not how it's normally done. But that's, that we, we can do anything we want. So that my thought is it's just not fair to the public.
Betty Ann, not to cause a lot more trouble for you, but is it possible to move up the date that you actually publish it? Like, it would be hard the first time, but if you get into a routine of doing it, you know, earlier in the, of that week, so that, that the Monday doesn't seem so arduous as, as what the chair is pointing out, that they have more days? If we put it up online on the Monday or Tuesday of that week, and then they had until the following Monday, it would seem to give everybody more time.
I certainly can do it. I would certainly think that maybe by the Wednesday before the meeting or the Thursday before, to give one full week of the documents being up, would that help?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we're all saying that if we were going to make it Monday the deadline for even the public, if it was a week before Monday, doesn't seem so awful, but that's just my thought.
I don't agree, but if the majority, you want to have a deadline, then we'll have a deadline. I think the public should be able to submit.
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree with that, too, that, I, I mean, I guess one question, though, for all of you who've been here for a while, is I haven't seen so many public comment, like emails or comments come in yet. Like, how many do we typically have, you know?
Not a lot.
Depends on the application.
That's what I thought. Yeah, I mean, so I, I mean, I like the idea of letting them comment.
It does depend on the application. If we get a thorny or one, or one with the public really involved, we could get a lot.
We rarely get a lot of comments at the last meeting. We may get a lot of people signing one thing, and we get, we may get people speaking, but we generally, we rarely get a lot of emailed comments or sent to Betty Ann or whatever it is.
So then I agree with Robin. I mean, I think, give them as much time as they can, and don't make deadlines that they're not going to know about. You know, I think that's very frustrating for the public, who's not going to necessarily be, follow the deadlines the way the lawyers are.
Right, but it's hard for you, the board members, to, to receive documents the day of the meeting and actually have an opportunity to review them, if it's something larger as well. It could be very challenging for you to get this influx of information on the day of the meeting.
Betty Ann?
Yes.
You said you could get it probably by the Thursday? So why don't we set it up to the Wednesday before the meeting, the last time we'll take comments from the public?
That's the day that we'll post the agenda, is what we were discussing.
Yeah, no, I'm saying.
Earlier.
Yeah, you'll post the agenda on Thursday, correct?
Perhaps Wednesday even, maybe even Wednesday, if it wasn't too tough for Betty Ann, if that's okay for Betty Ann.
Yeah.
No, whatever day, but give the public at least five days. So that would put it, if you do it on a Wednesday, they'll have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, even Tuesday, six days. If you publish it on a Thursday, give them till Wednesday morning. They have a week.
Let me ask you this question. How does the public know that? I know that there's an, I, I hear my neighbor is going, or somebody down the block has an application, and I know that it's going to be heard next Thursday. I've never been to a board meeting. I want to send my comments. How do I know that my comments are due by Wednesday, or Tuesday, or Monday, or whatever day we settle on?
It could be.
The applicant knows, because that's an official thing. How does a, how does the, I'm asking, I don't know the answer to the question.
I believe, post it on the website, post it on the website.
On the notice that went to neighbors that were affected, it could be on that notice that you have up until a certain date.
But what if it's not the neighbor? What if it's somebody down the block? I walked by and I see that this person has a, has a thing, and I want to comment on it. What does the planning board do, Greg?
I think Betty Ann, but they accept comments whenever, honestly, they just take the comments in.
Okay, all right. So do I have a consensus that we will accept comments from the public until Tuesday or Wednesday after, before the meeting?
Written comments. They can always come to a meeting and comment.
Of course, of course.
I mean.
So we're talking written comments. So I would think it should go to Wednesday.
I mean, I, I kind of like the idea that we should do what the planning board is doing, to be honest, and just let them come. Because I think, Rob, and the point you were also just mentioning, that, you know, people are, you know, even if you have, even if you have it up on the website, went into do, people aren't going to follow it. Human nature, they're going to procrastinate, they're going to send it in, and, and I, I feel like it's good to encourage public comment. But if that's, yeah, so, I mean, that's me, if everyone else feels like, oh, oh, do it easier and simpler to just do what the planning board does, and then it's also more consistent. But that's, that's what I, that's my two cents.
I don't think we should have a deadline, and I think that we should try to move up the date that we put it on public.
Perfect. So no deadlines for the public, the applicant has a deadline.
No, I actually don't, I don't agree, but I, I think everybody should have the right to just send it in. And, and hopefully, if it's not too arduous for Betty Ann, that it goes up a few more days than it normally does.
I remind you that the reason this even came up was because we were all, not we were all, many members of the board were commenting months ago that it was not fair that people, it wasn't fair that they couldn't review applicants' additional information. They were coming too late, and that we had to have a deadline. So it came up because it was a problem for board members, that people were adding submittals to their application, which is why we came up with the idea of having a deadline in the first. So I still think it was a problem before. I don't see why it would be not a problem now. Robin, did this issue come up this? What?
Robin, did this issue come up this month? Is that why you're bringing it up now?
Yes, came up again.
An applicant, an applicant tried to submit information this week?
This week, yes. And a member of the public. And I said, the member of the public could, but not the applicant. So I, I mean, yes, it comes up.
Was the applicant informed, or was it published somewhere?
Applicant knew what the deadline was, and the request to Betty Ann was, I know it's after the deadline, can I submit it anyway? Applicants know what the deadline is.
But the public's not going to have a chance to respond to it. And you know what?
Right.
They absolutely, you know, the applicants need to have a deadline, period.
I don't agree, but.
What, I, Greta?
Which, which application was that?
Does it matter?
Which application was that?
Stuart Tinker, somebody who knows the type. So this is not something we didn't know. And we can't set separate rules for different people. There's an application deadline, and there's a public deadline. There's an applicant deadline and a public. They could be the same, or they could be different, but that's just got to be straightforward.
The applicant deadline, then, the applicant deadline you're speaking of was something that was put in place only a couple of months ago. Is it online? Was it published? Is Betty Ann, which?
He knew it was the deadline, Meg.
We're not talking about the personal, this one particular case. I'm just saying.
Applicants know.
How are you, how are you going to, I am not for a deadline, but if the majority wants a deadline, I would just suggest that, right now, I don't think applicants understand that there is a deadline, because it's not published anywhere.
It is. It's published at the beginning of the year, every year, and we post it on the planning department page and your page and all the other.
And Betty Ann tells them, and Betty Ann tells them.
Every applicant, when they receive an application, they have a deadline and meeting scheduled for the whole year.
Right. I'm not talking about the initial application, and you have to get it in so much before the meeting, whether, when it's an ongoing one and other materials are coming in, do they understand that there's a deadline for as, when the hearing is open? Was that published somewhere?
Because I get, I, Betty Ann is often, has often, I'd say at least once for every meeting, Betty Ann gets a request from an applicant, or not the same applicants, always different applicants. At least once for every meeting, there's a request that comes in from an applicant saying, I know it's after the deadline, can I submit it anyway? It happens monthly.
For every board, too.
This was just, Stuart was just the last, the most recent, but I, you know, and I realized that we had to really make, nail this down so it was very clear. But yes, applicants know.
All right, let, let me go this way. I, I think that we should publish it earlier and give the public more time. But the applicants, there is a deadline. They know what it is. They need to keep it. The public, we should have no deadline, because they have the right to come into the meeting and speak on it.
When it's an open meeting, so it's the next time we're going to hear this application, what is the deadline for the applicant? Is it the same as the one that you published for the original? What is the deadline?
It is. It's 22 days before the agenda, and the reason being is because now, all the information, you don't want to receive 12 emails from me with, oh, just one more. you don't want to receive 12 emails from me with, oh, just one more thing. I'd like to send you one complete package for the agenda, and that is it. That's all the documents that were submitted by the applicants.
In general, they're responding to other materials that were set at the last meeting, so or something, and they might want to do research or something. So I'm just thinking, I know when I was someone challenging something, when I came in as a public member, I never had a deadline. I wasn't aware of a deadline. You know, even though I was with the applicants, at the time, there were no deadlines. So this is new to me. And I thought that when it was, I can understand to get it together, that everything's in place, so we can even open the meeting. It's very important. It's a certain number of days in advance and that it can be published. But once the meeting is going and other materials and information is coming in, is popping in, you're letting the applicant know. I'm just wondering if it's, we really think that it's fair to prevent the applicant from being able to submit in a time that, you know.
Okay, just so, we've had all the comments unless anyone has a real comment. I'm ready to, let's take a vote, just.
I'm sorry.
I have one other comment.
But there's another there's another aspect of this that we didn't discuss, and that is the fact that a month ago, I asked counsel to submit cases pertaining to an application. And the cases didn't come in. I had to send an email to Betty Ann to inquire about that request. And then this week, counsel submitted the cases. You know, this was a five-minute request, you know, shouldn't have taken counsel more than five minutes. And it was extremely disappointing that, you know, those cases came just a few days before this meeting. I I I don't see why that was the case, and it certainly, it's not fair for the applicant, and it's not fair for us, especially given that this was totally not an owner's request. So, you know, that's also.
We can't hold the public responsible if it took too long to get information. And also, we shouldn't burden Betty Ann with having to keep modifying applicants and including additional data into their packages. We'll never get through this, okay? I believe that the 22 days before, fine. They can't submit it at then, then they can request an adjournment, they could submit the documentation, and we can move forward from there. The public, I believe, should add.
That must apply also internally, village employees, including counsel.
Typically, the other boards allow staff and consultants to provide their information the Friday before the meeting, to see, you know.
Okay, but we didn't get that. I need to give a reminder to Betty Ann.
Yeah, I do think 22 days before, I think to the point Meg was making earlier, like, that's, that does seem like that's tough if you're like, Adam, you know, one of our meetings, and then you have these follow-ups. And then you only have, like, you know, you don't have that much time. I do, what would a solution be to, like, cut that time somehow? So it's more like, I don't know, 15 days before or something to give them a little bit more time, just to throw that out there if I'm understanding it correctly.
Betty Ann, Betty Ann, question for you is, we leave the, if the 22 days applies to new applications, and then for additional information, let's say we make it 15 days, is that burdensome for you to have to do?
It's not so long as it doesn't change our public hearing notice or anything that like that, because there are legal deadlines that I need to meet in order to publish the, get the public hearing notice together, draft that agenda, get it published in a proper amount of time, and and to make sure that applicants have their signage up and their mailings completed, but for.
Now, there's another way to do it. There's another way we can do it. So so maybe that's the way. But but as opposed to having an official deadline for the applicant, remember, not the public, for the applicant, at each meet, we could remind each applicant at the meeting, if you want to submit additional information, you must get it to us 15, I'm picking 15, I don't know if you want something else. You must get it to us 15 days before the next meeting. Actually, it's easier to make it two weeks because two weeks is is easy. Two weeks before the next meeting, and that's it. So that's fine. That's not, that seems to me reasonable. It gives them, because yes, 20, having to do it 22 days for a meeting, at least in like eight days in a month, it's 30 days, it isn't much time. So I think that would be reasonable. That gives them an additional week. That's a fair amount of time. So I I support that idea.
I'm just not sure where the 22-day deadline came into being the practice for the zoning board in the past. I'm not sure who set that.
Let's leave the 22 days alone. If we want to mess mess with the 22 days, let's, we'd have to research it and figure out why it came up in the first place. But once we know what the agenda is, this isn't changing the agenda. This is saying, I'm on the agenda. Here's additional material to be submitted for my application on the agenda. Here's my additional information for my application. That was continued from the last hearing.
Betty Ann, can you live with 15 days before, not on the original application, but on adjustments to the application or re-submittals of documentation? Can you make it work? And how much pressure does that put on you?
No, I could certainly do 15 days as being the, what is it, the applicant subsequent or supplemental information? I use 15 days. I already have that worked into my calendar for when I need to do other things for the zoning board. So I already have that 15-day deadline worked into my system. So I certainly could. It gives the applicant actually, about two weeks, yeah.
Which is, which is reasonable.
I mean, I can live with that, or Betty Ann can live with it.
Okay, so I, this is, I propose if anyone disagrees or this is, so for public, for applicants themselves who are submitting additional information, they have to get that additional information in 15 days before the next meeting. And for members of the public, they could submit at any time. So anyone disagree?
No.
What about staff?
Well, if if the custom of the villages, if the custom in the village is to allow them to submit till the Friday before, then that should be the practice for us because there it's, that's the way it should be. If that's the practice for all the other boards, then I think that should be the practice for us.
Oh, we, I I believe that came into play because that's when the agenda goes live, the Friday before the meeting. Since you're changing when the agenda goes live.
I don't think, well, yeah. Well, oh, because when the agenda goes live is when you post the application?
I post everything, right.
But when do you post the application for everyone else, the Friday before? But no, the.
The Friday before. That that was a standard that came through a past village manager, that it became uniform that the Friday before the meeting, the agendas go live.
Then I think we, then notwithstanding what you suggested, Doug, I think if that's the practice in the village and the village manager, I think that's what we should leave it for. It goes live because Betty Ann has to put up all the other agendas and have to get one agenda on a different day, maybe more complicated. I don't know. So I would say, let's leave it the Friday before for the agenda to go live, since they have been almost a full week to, you know, right, they have until the meeting, which is the following Thursday, to give us comments. And that members of the staff have to get their materials in also by that Friday.
Betty Ann, that it was not difficult to do.
Following Fri, to this meeting from Friday to the meeting, that's fine, as long as the public has more than one, two days to reply, because, like I said, they have every right to come to the meeting and speak. So I mean, you're sitting there from Friday through next Thursday, through the following Thursday, which is a week. They have a week.
Fine. So going back to what I said before, then applicants can submit until 15 days before the meeting, any submittal additional information. Members of the staff have to submit anything they're submitting. And members of the staff and consultants have to submit anything they're submitting by the Friday before the meeting, and members of the public can submit at any time.
And the original application has to be submitted 22 days.
Right, no change, no change in that. And then we can look, that's a different issue. We can look into that, why it's 22, but let's leave that for now.
Well, it's an even number.
Anybody, is that, does that work?
Works for me.
Abby?
Yep, that works.
Greta?
Come on now.
I'm not sure if you need to motion and vote on a change of procedure.
Well, when it's not an actual rule, if it's a rule procedure, we have to vote on it. If we're amending the rule procedure officially, we have to vote on it. So just in case it is, okay, let's take a vote on, make a motion that what we adopt this practice. No change in the date by which applications have to be submitted for the first hearing. Applicants whose hearings have been continued can submit by 15 days before the next meeting. Members of the staff and consultants who are submitting have to submit before the Friday, by the Friday before the meeting, and members of the public can submit at any time. Second?
Me, I got it.
Okay. All those in favor? Abby?
Yep.
Doug?
Yes.
Yes. Greta?
Yes.
Okay, and Meg? No? Okay, so it's, that's the way we're doing it. That's adopted.
And you want the agenda to go live now, the Friday before, instead of the Wednesday?
The way it still has been.
Okay.
Okay, um, now, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I will admit that I haven't read them. So if the rest of you have read them, we'll take this up and go through it, and you'll make all your comments. I haven't read them.
So we're going to read through all the minutes. I was hoping that we could get the minutes. Wouldn't that be faster? Can we wait and do this when we just read it?
You didn't get, wait, wait.
I got it. I got it a couple of months ago. I don't know where they are now, and.
Okay, so then, so then I'll take that, you're not, I'm not the only one who didn't read them.
I know I've read them a couple of months ago. I actually had notes and things. It's been so many months. I don't know where. And I was hoping to find a virtual copy, and I would remember what I thought. And to sit here and read through them and try to remember, it doesn't seem that important. It seems like we could do it this month.
Let's not.
The copies are on notice, all the minutes.
Would you please recirculate all the minutes that we need to review so that we all have them in front of us in one place, and we can review them and get you comments? If anybody wants to make written comments, I I would suggest that the easiest thing to do is if you have actual written comments, that you circulate them to Betty Ann ahead of time. If you have, because that's the easiest. So if everyone can get them to Betty Ann, so that Betty Ann can see all the comments, I would suggest the Friday before. Well, Betty Ann, you can get all the minutes like by next week, right?
I can give them to you now.
What, okay, if you circulate them whenever, we will get to you any comments, any written comments. You can have other things if there's something to be discussed, like if you think, why don't we think that's what we said? You know, some things may have to be discussed, but if you have simple edits, send them to Betty Ann by the Friday before the next meeting, please.
And just so you know, when it comes to the meetings that are held through Zoom, we're required to do transcripts. So you may see older minutes that are more bulleted and to the point. And then the Zoom meeting minutes will be more like a transcript. So they're going to be much lengthier. So I only doled out three sets of minutes to you because I thought that that would be a big enough chunk for you to get through. Now we're looking at May, so you're going to have a few sets of minutes that are going to be much longer than the bulleted meeting minutes from the beginning of the year.
Yeah, and just so you know, you may get bulleted meeting minutes in the interim. You may get bulleted because it's the state, the executive order says that they have to be transcribed at a later date. So it doesn't mean that the minutes will be the transcription. It just, we'll see how the workflow works out because we still have to meet the two-week deadline for minutes. But we're trying to do the transcript once, so we don't have to do it again at a later date. That's, the reason for that is because of the executive order that enables you to have these digital meetings. It requires that there's this transcription made at some later time.
Okay, but it doesn't require that the minutes be transcribed, just that there be a transcription.
That's correct, but we don't want to duplicate things to the extent that we can within our workflow.
Okay, well, so this was three sets. Why don't we get four? Why don't we get through March? Those were all the pre-Zoom meeting minutes. Did you do the March minutes, Betty Ann?
March, March is done.
So why don't you circulate to the board members the January, February, and March minutes? And we will send written comments by the Friday before, and if we have to discuss at the next meeting, we'll discuss. Otherwise, we'll just vote.
Okay.
Again, if it's just edits, because there could be typos, there could be just, I actually said something instead of something else. That's one thing. And if it's not clear, Betty Ann, what the comments are, or you think there's discussion, then we'll discuss. I think getting written in advance helps. Okay. Okay, so we are now beginning the public hearings. The first item on of public hearing is calendar number 1I2020, T. Kurt, appeal on 130 Beach Avenue. Mr. T. Kurt, do you wish to say anything?
You should be able to talk, Stuart.
Can you hear me?
Greg, any consolation? Oh, okay, his mute just went off.
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
You can?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Can I make a comment on your previous discussion?
No. This is about your application. We don't have general public meetings like the Board of Trustees do. And I, we're not really opening it up for public discussion. I'd rather.
I think we left it last time that member Dunaway was going to review the multiple dwellings law, so I'd be interested in hearing that.
Okay.
The boards, you know, where where that decision's going to go.
Okay, I took a look at the property. 45427. It has three units on it. That would put it under the multiple dwelling law. Rather than me, I'm going to ask Frank, if Frank can come on, because he is the authority having jurisdiction.
No, we're the authority, legally, not the building department, it's us.
No, the authority having jurisdiction on the code is the building department. We have the authority to evaluate what he says. He is the authority having jurisdiction with corrected, with respects to the building code. Frank?
But the multiple dwellings law is not, is not a bill, it's the zoning code. It's a zoning matter.
He has responsibility for all of that code.
I understand.
Frank?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. But the the issue came out, I said, I don't know if you heard what I said, but the property 45427 has three units on it. And I'm not going into me being a certified New York State Building Codens official. I'd rather ask the authority having jurisdiction, which is you. In your evaluation of that property, did you employ the multiple dwelling law?
I I did, because there are presently existing three dwelling units and a possible fourth on the third floor of the main house. That's what I've said from the beginning.
All right, so it is that. Okay, I couldn't find anything in in the Town of Marineric records, but I know that it falls under the Town of Rye.
That's right.
Did you guys, did you guys discuss anything with the Town of Rye?
Yes, I believe.
It's the Village of Marineric zoning code that's relevant.
I understand, but the village, the art, our roles in the Village of Marineric show it as three units on the 45427 property, which is that property, which indicates, and it falls under the multiple dwelling law. The thing is, the property also falls in the Town of Rye. And I would be curious what the Town of Rye would think.
Did the Town of Rye adopt the multiple dwellings law as the village did?
I'm curious how the Town of Rye would view the property as it sits right now with the addition of that third floor. Frank, any idea?
I I believe Charlotte. I, I believe Charlotte did some research with that, maybe she can come on. But I believe the Town of Ry is now gonna consider that third floor a separate taxable dwelling unit.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is Charlotte there?
I hope so.
She's there.
Hi, yes, um...
Charlotte, can you expand on what Frank just said?
Sure, um, I had a conversation with Gordon Kaisment, who is the Town of Ry assessor. Because I wanted to know what they found, especially in light of knowing that at this time they are doing a reassessment. And so they're evaluating all of the properties that sit within the Town of Ry. The assessor's office there is now considering the main structure to be three dwelling units and the garden house or garage building to be a separate dwelling unit. So giving us a total of four.
Right, okay.
Yes.
In, in answer to your question, Meg, if I am not mistaken, and I would have to look, but the Town of Ry, I think, developed the multiple residents law, which is more stringent than the multiple dwelling law when it comes to the definition of a dwelling unit. So, you know, I mean, that, that much I do know.
Okay.
But I don't know whether the Town, I don't know whether the Town of Ry actually adopted it.
So you do know, Doug, that the multiple dwellings law is, talks about multiple dwellings in a single building or structure, so we're not talking... I'm sorry. If you could just let me just have a couple sentences in here.
Go ahead.
Under the multiple dwellings law, under the definition of chapters number four, it says a dwelling is a building or structure or portion thereof. And then it discusses the dwelling. So it talks about it being in one structure. So if our board should find that that third floor is a third unit, then I suppose it would be a multiple dwelling. But the fact that there's something else on the lot over a garage, there's a separate building, does not make the other building a multiple dwelling. It doesn't talk about a lot or how many buildings are on the lot. It's how many different units are inside the one structure. And I believe...
I, we have a difference, the difference of opinion is between the zoning, our zoning code and the multiple dwelling law. The multiple dwelling law speaks specifically to building or structure, that is correct. So the, under the, under the zoning code, it speaks of lot. And the use of this lot is, the permitted use, right, is not more than one dwelling. So whether it's one dwelling or five dwellings, uh, units, there's not more than one allowed. So if there's more than one, that, that's a, that's on a property, that relates to the code. With respect to the dwelling itself, it is a building or structure. And you can tell that because of things like a building designed for and occupied exclusively by one family is a single-family private dwelling. A building designed and occupied exclusively by two families is a two-family private dwelling. So it is the building that matters. So in this case, right now, there is, it is, there are three dwell, not right now, I mean, if we determine that that third floor unit is not a separate dwelling unit, then you have a two-family dwelling and a single-family dwelling on this property. If we determine, under the multiple dwelling law, if we determine that that third floor is a separate unit, then we have a three-family dwelling, which isn't defined as such, but is in fact a multiple dwelling and a one-family dwelling on this property. So I think that's where, because they're not the same, the code and the multiple dwelling law have, are intended to accomplish two different goals. The goal of the multiple dwelling law is to ensure...
Robin, I think there's a third choice, and the third choice is not that it's a two-family, but that it's a legal border as permitted by the village code. So there are various options, but I, you know, definitely, you know, the original option of is this arrangement of border relationship, which is legal, is something that should be considered also. And it's a really important consideration because, you know, other residents who are allowed to have borders need to know what's acceptable and what's not.
We are making a determination.
But, wait, wait, okay, but if you want to consider it as a, if you want to consider it as a border, the definition of a border in any one of them is relationship to a family. They coexist in the same space. So a border would have to move into your apartment.
Wait, wait, where did you get that definition?
Read the definition.
Where's that, where are you getting that definition?
So in multiple dwelling law...
Try the multiple...
Multiple dwelling law.
Try the building code and try the village code.
You can't use that definition.
It's in the building code.
That, that's, that's ridiculous.
The building code is not a zoning code.
They're two different sets of laws. They may or may not both apply, but they, they're two separate laws.
You have to look at the considerations. Here's where I have an issue. And here's where I have an issue.
Can we go over the, since what the applicant asked us about was multiple dwellings law, so if we could stay there, and multiple dwellings law, the definition of a family in multiple dwellings is a person maintaining a household with not more than four borders or rumors is considered a family. So...
I will explain something. Go ahead, finish.
Okay, and that, actually, our code is more restrictive, where we only allow one to two borders. So, but you have that same sense that you can be a family unit with one to two renters. Rumors, borders, we're right, we have to make our way through that definition.
I agree.
A family can have...
You know, the issue comes out, go ahead, the issue comes out, as you pointed out, the more restrictive rules apply. And be consistent, within the more, multiple codes, the more restrictive of any code applies.
Well, then, you're, you're, you're only reading, Meg, you're only reading a piece of the definition of family. In both definitions, and there's a key, there's a single key that you're all, that you're all ignoring, which is that not, the borders have to be part, living together as a single housekeeping unit. And there are a fair amount of decisions, not related to two and three families, but there are court decisions on the question that came up. And this came up primarily in the issue of, um, when is a group home a single household? And the courts and the decisions all relate to, does it look like a single household? Do they eat together? Do they make one set of buying decisions? Is it a single household? If it is not a single household, then it is not a single family. So the definition in the, in the multiple dwelling law of family, I will read the multiple dwelling law definition, is either a person occupying a dwelling and maintaining a household with not more than four borders, rumors, or lodges, or two or more persons occupying a dwelling, living together and maintaining a common household with not more than four borders, rumors, or lodgers. Common household, the Village of Mamaronek zoning code. One or more persons occupying a dwelling unit and living together as a single housekeeping unit in a familial relationship, or not read more than two unrelated persons living together as a single housekeeping unit.
I'm sorry, Robin.
So you have, let me see this, Meg.
No, 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 I just, I didn't get something you just said. Where did you read a familial relationship? I'm sorry, I don't know where you're reading from.
The definition of family in our zoning code.
Yes. In, in the Mamaronek zoning code.
Yes.
Familial.
So you have to comply with both of them. So you have to comply with the more restrictive, but if one of them has additional requirements, you can't say, I don't have to comply with it. So the concept of familial, now, border is separate, except that in the Mamaronek, in the, except that in the multiple dwelling law, the border still is occupying within the household.
So you're switching back and forth. I thought we were gonna stop and talk about the multiple dwellings law and whether or not it applies. And so now we're switching up what it says as family in one thing and trying to bring it back to multiple dwellings. If we could just look at the multiple dwelling, and in terms of that definition of family, I don't think we'd take a definition of family, what's that called? A definition of family, this is definitely something we all have to come to terms with and discuss and see where we come out on this. But I don't think that you can, we're looking at multiple dwellings right now. And in the multiple dwellings, it doesn't talk about a familial right relationship. It does give the opportunity that it could be renters living in the same space. So I'm just trying to get us, instead of all over the place, talking about the multiple dwellings law, that I don't see that, that it applies unless we, when we go through it and we feel that that has created a separate dwelling unit entirely, or if there are people feeling like they're living in some way that it's not compliant with the code, then multiple dwellings law would. But there's nothing in the multiple dwellings law that's just obvious that it's, it's...
Meg.
We have to go back to reviewing.
All right, let's, let's go back.
There's another issue I'd like to bring up, please.
Okay.
Let me just bring up one issue and then Abby. And that is, as I understand it, the multiple dwellings law was adopted by Mamaronek in 2005. So before then, residents had this right to do a rumor or border without these multi-dwelling definitions or application at all. So they had this right. Everyone on Beet Street had this right to have a rumor or border. And I just think that really should be the starting point of what a rumor and border is, as opposed to applying the multiple dwellings law that wasn't, that was adopted later?
Greta, if you want to, first of all, the, the applicant submitted an application just recently, so he falls under every one of the codes. And if the, hold on, hold on, let me finish. If the definition of family is more, if the definition of family, or which includes the term border in it, is more stringent and more restrictive in the village zoning code, then that's the definition you have to go by, not the multiple dwelling law. The thing is, you have to, you, and Frank will tell you, he's sitting right there. You have to look at every one of the applicable codes and laws in effect, okay? And the more stringent of every one of those apply. So if the, if our zoning code, and I'm gonna take Robin at what she said, if our zoning code said that has to be in a familial relationship, that indicates that the border must live within the confines of your place.
Yeah, but that's not in terms of the, you can't take a definition from one code for family and then try to put it into multiple dwellings.
I'm not putting it into my place.
When we get to the village, I'm sorry, if we could get to the village code, we will have to talk about family. But we are using the definition of family to understand if multiple dwellings law pertains.
No, we're not, we're using, we're not. We're using two different laws to understand two different things. Let's, 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 you know what, let's, let's break this down a little, and then let's break this down. Right now, we know that the, let's, let's take the issue first. Whether or not it's a multiple dwelling is whole, is separate and apart from whether or not he is, um, this third, this unit on the third floor is a violate, is an increase in a non-conforming condition by, because it's adding a new unit. That's really the first issue that we have to decide. Forget that, that's the issue, that's the first issue.
Okay, we were answering, we were allowing the applicant to speak, and he asked us to talk about multiple dwellings law. I think if we're gonna go on to something else, then maybe we ask Stuart what he would like to do. So this is, this was his time to present.
I, I don't think it's a question of what he'd like us to continue, he's, he'd like us to consider.
I, I, I think you should defer the discussion of multiple dwellings law until members have seen what I submitted. Because I was told by the village manager after a series of meetings with the building department and village attorney, that, quote, because one of those dwelling units is in a separate structure, however, main building is not a multiple dwelling as that term's defined in section 126-11 of village code. So, I, you know, it's your, it's the board's decision whether multiple dwellings law applies here, but I think you should probably need to look at my submission before you go further down this road.
Is this a new submission?
This is the submission I put in Monday, because I did not...
That was circulated for the board members.
Drop, can I finish? I did not realize there was a drop dead date of Friday. Um, and whatever, if that's gonna be the rule, maybe you wanna put that on the agendas or somewhere else so people can be aware of it. So, but I'm happy to discuss anything else and if the board hasn't...
Here's what I would recommend, okay? One, we should look at, obviously, what Stuart submitted. Two, we, and I, I'm going to ask Frank and Charlotte, okay? How, a-actually Frank, probably go up to DCEA, even though they don't get into the zoning aspects of it, because we, we need the parameters and the guidelines of what DEC, DCEA says on one, the stringency of the codes, and which codes and laws would be into effect.
Okay.
Okay, because I know that if the definition of border per the zoning code is more stringent than any of the other codes and laws, then that's the governing factor. But when you look at the definition of a dwelling unit, the more stringent regardless of what code it's in, because Mamaronek covers the zoning, the building, the state code. And they are all governed regardless of what anyone thinks, that we only look at the zoning. We have to look at how it's in compliance with all of the codes. So I think that we need that kind of definition.
Well, Doug, I, I don't agree, I think that the issue, because it is, the question is, unless the third floor unit makes this a multiple, this building, in other words, if the third floor unit is not a separate unit, let's start with that. The third floor unit is not a separate unit, in which case there are two units in the main building and one unit in the second building, is that correct? Just wanna confirm that with Stuart, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was getting a snack, what was the question?
Okay, assuming, just ignore the third floor, pretend the third floor doesn't exist. Doesn't matter who, whether it's anything, it doesn't exist. How many units, forget the third floor, how many units are in the main building and how many units are in the other building?
There's two in the main building and one in the other building.
Okay, so the mo, main building becomes a multiple dwelling if the third floor is a separate unit. If the third floor is not a separate unit, that building, that structure is not a multiple dwelling, so...
What would determine that, Robin, is simple.
We have to get, what's that, that's what I want to get to, Doug, that's what I'm getting to. So I just wanna make, make that clear of where we're starting, that's how we're starting. Now the question is, is it a, um, is it a separate unit? Okay, where do we go to learn? Now, because it's putting us into, potentially putting us into a separate set of laws, i.e. the multiple dwelling law, we have to look for that third floor unit, we have to look at both places. Because if that third floor unit is not a unit under the multiple dwelling law, regardless of what the Village of Mamaronek says, if it is not a separate dwelling unit under the multiple dwelling law, then it is not a multiple dwelling under the multiple dwelling law. Because if it's a separate unit under the Village of Mamaronek code, but it's not a separate unit under the multiple dwelling law, we can't make it be a multiple dwelling by, by something we do in the Village of Mamaronek. Has to mean, so, right, we can't, the Village of Mamaronek can't say, we're gonna decide that two-bedroom, every time you have two bedrooms, that's a separate unit if the multiple dwelling law somehow doesn't define it. Now, we could have something in, so, we have... Now, we could have something in, so we have to look at both. We have to start with one and then go to the other.
Okay, the first thing you have to go, okay? And by the way, I'm going to say that I totally disagree because it's based on the dwelling units on the property, but that's a whole separate issue. The first thing you have to look at is the definition of border. That's the first thing. And you have two definitions. The village says in a familial setting, in the same, in the same, in the same occupancy, in the same building. So if you have a border that is sitting in a separate unit in itself with a doorbell, with a mailbox, okay? Isolated by a hallway. Is that a familial setting? We have to be very careful with what we do with this particular application because there are other places within this village that fall under to the same category. And whatever decision that this board makes at that, at this particular point in time is going to impact every one of the other units that are in here. It depends what we want to create for this village. If you say, you know what, and I'm only putting out hypotheticals. If you say, you know what, the border has to live into the same unit as number two, then you've already answered your question. That is a separate, isolated unit. And that makes it multiple dwelling.
Is there a definition, is there a definition, is there a, I'm sorry, is there a definition for rumor in the code?
No.
No, it falls under family. In the, in the zoning code, it falls under family and it says familial relationship, meaning they all live together.
Meg is asking a different question. Meg is asking a different question.
Do we have the term rumor defined in the code?
No.
So he's allowed to rent to one or two rumors.
Yes, but.
He's going to border, but he's allowed to rent to one or two rumors.
Rumors and borders are classified in the same category.
Well, not in our code. So we have to, we have to, as a board, to determine what exactly.
We have to interpret it. Wait, in our, first of all, let's stop. We don't have a definition in our code of border. We have, the fact that it talks about a border in one definition is not a definition of the border itself.
That is true.
We have no definition of border and no definition of rumor. The reference we have to border is in the definition, is in some other definition.
Permitted accessory uses, and it says rumor or border.
Right. But there's no definition of either of those terms.
Could you point me in the direction of where you find that as an accessory use so that I can see it? Where is that in the code?
I've had it once before.
Hang on, it's 342.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
It's, so borders or rumors, and then it's also in rumors or borders, it's in 34256 as well, under schedule of off-street parking requirements, for what it's worth.
It's three, it's actually three, yeah, 34221 subsection, so you can have it all, subsection, B, capital B, subsection six, not more than two rumors or borders.
There's no definition there. It just refers to rumors or borders.
But it does as an accessory use, which I think is interesting. So I was kind of curious what everyone thought about that.
We're not getting any clarity as to what was meant by, we don't have any candy on definition.
Is there any legislative history on this, or is that, is it just too old and it doesn't exist?
I can't answer that. I don't know the answer to that question.
There's, there's no designation of when this was, it's amended or effective. So I would assume it's, it's a carryover from when the entire zoning code was adopted. You'll see the other provisions have a notation of amendment and effective dates. This one is, was made law when the zoning code was made law. This, this version of the zoning.
It takes us back to where we are when we started this whole thing, which is what the question is. Is the, is the resident, the person who lives on the second, the third floor of this building a rumor or border, or are they a separate unit? We started kind of full circle back to where we started. That's really the question. He's saying, I guess the applicant is saying, they are a rumor or border, which is a permitted accessory use. And the village is saying, no, they're not. They are a separate unit.
Well, I mean, the building department.
We could look at the definition of dwelling unit. I mean, I was reading through that. I don't know where we're at with this discussion, but.
The physicality of the space.
Yeah.
And that it needs complete housekeeping facilities, which is what I thought we always relied upon before. Like a kitchen with a stove and an oven and a dishwasher, a completely outfitted kitchen. And without that, you don't have complete housekeeping facilities, regardless of, of whether, even if anybody's in there. Even if it's empty, you would say you need to remedy that because you shouldn't have it sitting there. It wasn't about the fact that there's a person in there.
Right, but it also. Where do you see the definite, there's something in our code that says they need, that a unit has complete housekeeping facilities and defines those complete housekeeping facilities are?
It's under the definition of dwelling unit, Robin, on 3423. So it reads, the definition of a dwelling unit, a building or entirely self-contained portion thereof containing complete housekeeping facilities for only one family, including any domestic servants employed on the premises and having no enclosed, and see, and this is the issue, Meg, is you write about housekeeping, but then it says, and having no enclosed space other than vestibles, entrance, or other hallways, or porches, or cooking, or sanitary facilities in common with other dwelling units.
It also says cooking facilities. It doesn't say it has to have a stove.
Yeah.
Nothing in there that says it needs a stove.
And as Doug said, we have to decide because this will have an impact on, you know, in general. There's a lot of ambiguities to how, because they didn't, they didn't make a little subset of list of what's under cooking facilities either. So this is a little bit of, you know, of what we're going to have to figure out what that means.
And we have one, we are the Board of Appeals. We are not the village trustees. We are making a decision based on one application before us. If it has implications for other properties and that causes, whichever way we go, and that our decision is going to cause a problem or not a problem for other properties, then that's something they have to take up with the trustees. It is not our obligation. Or in fact, we should not be determining what the answer to this is because it's going to affect other properties. We have one application, and that's all we have before us, one application. And based on this application and this application alone, what do we think? We cannot say, well, you know, lots of other people have the same thing. So if we're going to let this be a third unit, that's going to cause problems for other people. Or if we're not going to let this be a third unit and anyone else can do this, that's not our issue. Our issue is for Mr. Teager and the use of this building and this property, is that third floor a separate unit and/or, or not a separate unit? And as simple as that, that's our decision.
I was just alluding, I was alluding to the fact that when we make a decision, we are setting a precedent because we should follow the same precedent if we have anything come before us or that the building department should be listening to that precedent. And so that's what I was alluding to, so that if we're looking at some ambiguity in the code that has never come up before the ZBA, and then we start to interpret it and we start to figure out what this means to us, we are setting a precedent. That's all I meant.
Yes, everything the zoning board does sets a precedent. When we make, give some, grant something a body of variance, we're setting a precedent because similar applications. The fact that something's never come to the board before doesn't mean that's anything, you know, lots of times, there are, I would, and Mamaroneck is too small, so it may not happen. But you go to any big city, there are many, many properties that have been operating illegally in violation of one law or another for many years. Nobody's enforced it. That doesn't make it legal. And that doesn't mean, well, it's the first time it's ever come up, so we can't do it. Just because no one's looked at it before, because it hasn't been considered, doesn't mean we're making a decision. We should make the best decision we can make based on the evidence before us and based on what we think the applicable law is. And based on that, we make a decision. And that's our decision.
Well, I agree. But to do that, we have to take into account all of the facts, every one of them.
As applied to this property only, not as maybe.
So how are you going to, so how are you going to look at this board that already set a precedence way back when, when it denied the application for a third floor apartment, for a third apartment in that building? Back in, I don't know what year it was, but it was denied by the zoning board of appeals. So the board has already set a precedent.
Yeah, and Doug, Doug.
Meg is going to argue the point.
Doug, this is not that case, this is not that application. That application wanted another unit to buy and sell.
Let me finish, Greta.
This is not a unit, the second.
It is a unit.
Second floor cannot be sold.
The third floor, the third floor is a unit.
It's muddy with water. Let's simplify this.
Excuse me, Frank.
Yes.
What is the address of the guy who did work in the village?
I think he, I think he made his application as the third floor of 130 Beach Road.
I, there you go. He's not living in Stewart's unit.
Yeah, yeah. You know, whether you use multiple dwelling law or zoning law, I don't care which law, from a practical standpoint, that is a de facto dwelling unit.
Just making it simple.
The point that Greta was making.
If I'm going to make it simple, it seems to me, I tried to break it down, that the question of whether or not under the village zoning code, which allows rumors or borders and also, and how do you define it? I don't know. But I would say, since it does talk about, you know, housekeeping facilities and cooking facilities without defining, and technology changes over time, and at one point, you needed, you know, stoves were different. So let's, let's recognize that technology changes over time. The question I think is pretty simple for us. Is the existence, does this unit, as configured and as it exists, is it a separate unit? I use the word unit. Let's say, does the third floor, as it exists and is used, a separate unit? Or is the person who lives there simply a border in this building? That's the simple question. The issue is, how do we decide that? But that's the simple, it's really a simple question. And I think let's go back to that basic question.
Okay, let's go back to it.
But can I just say, wait, wait, have we, have we finished with the public discussion endpoint, though? I'm just worried that we're having the discussion already, and I'm just kind of wondering what our process is with this.
Mr. Teager, do you have other things that you were going to submit in your submittal, other information?
Yes.
Yeah, no, there are a lot of exhibits, and there's my basic understanding of what you've discussed so far. So I just wanted to get it into the record. But I'm happy to wait till next meeting if, you know, since you don't have it before you and it kind of has to be there.
Okay, so based on what Abby said, and Abby's making a good point, is there anybody from the public? So Stuart, right now, do you have anything else you want to say today? Regardless of what you have to submit, not discussing what you, what you tried to submit but didn't get submitted because it was after the deadline. Do you have anything else you want to say now before I open it to the public?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment about your submission policy.
We want, we, you know what, your comment is that it needs to be, people need to know it. So, okay, that's the comment.
No, that's, that's not the comment.
Robert, we shouldn't make the comment, we've already made a decision.
Right.
So it shouldn't be open to public comment.
Or about what the law requires as far as the public being informed about your meeting. So what open meetings law requires of the zoning board is that what you're going to be reviewing at the meeting is made available on the village website as early as practicable. So I'm hearing from Betty Ann that 22 days out, you've got everything you need.
No, we don't.
I'm sorry, but you can't be placed on the agenda if it's not complete. I thought that's what I heard.
That's not what the issue is. The issue isn't whether the application from the applicant is complete. The issue is when other things are submitted. But we're not discussing this anymore. We've made a decision. If you have a problem. So do you have anything else you want to say about your particular application?
No, not until you review what I.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
Please raise your hand. Use the raise a hand feature.
One hand up there.
Okay. Okay, Benny, you're on.
Good evening. I've been watching the, just a couple of quick comments. There is in fact no definition for rumors or borders and the online code, there's only two references in the, in the code, 34221, which you, you guys just looked at, accessory use. And then 34256. I think this is more important because sometimes when you read, in my view, when I read things that are similar, it almost goes to the definition. So 34256 is the schedule of off-street parking. I don't know if anybody has it up. I think, Abigail, you probably do since you saw the other code. So the parking requirements is very, very interesting. Parking requirements for, if somebody has a rumor or a border, which the term is synonymous, requires one parking space per room that is being occupied by the border. So we've talked about the third floor being a separate unit, and it is a separate unit because it has a separate entrance to it. So I believe the documents that were submitted indicate there are two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen. So there's probably four rooms, which would imply by definition of the village's zoning code, 34256, that that rumor or border requires four parking spaces because those are the number of rooms that that room, border is occupying. So that's kind of like, it seems like a stretch. Why would you need four parking spaces for one person? But that's the problem with the lack of definition. The border or rumor, in the traditional sense, occupies one room and lives with the family in the same unit. So it's one additional parking space. So you can't make it something that it's not. I'm sorry, Greta doesn't agree with this, but it's painfully obvious that a border lives with the family. You take on a border, he has his own room, or he or she has his own room. They eat together, they utilize the same facilities, and you provide one parking space. If you give that border five rooms, not a bedroom, because it's, the code is very defined, it's one per room. So if that border is occupying five rooms, then they have to provide five parking spaces. So it's kind of like common sense, you're arguing against something that doesn't make sense. My, my only concern is what I said last time, is that this is a one-family neighborhood. And the limitations that are being sought to be extended, it just doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit. So if there were no separate doors, no separate wall, and second and third floors flowed where the tenancy or the use was by the same occupancy, then maybe that would work. So, you know, the current occupant on the second floor shares the, the space with the occupant on the third floor. No doors. So I think Frank and Charlotte, you know, have explained the position of the, of the village code very well. And I just hope that the board recognizes that what limitation we have on lack of definition is provided for in the parking regulation for the number of spaces. That's all I have.
Okay.
I just want to make the comment that I have not made a decision on this case. I, my comment is I don't like the. My comment is, I don't like the, necessarily the process and some of, some issues which I don't think are relevant to the determination of the issue, but I, I strongly disagree that I've come to a definitive conclusion on this.
Okay. Next up is Gina Vannick. Okay, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm concerned about something here, when I project this out to my home or other people I know that have multiple levels on their house, a two-family house maybe, and you're older, and your spouse died, and you live alone, and you went to another person on another floor, you may not use that floor, even though it's available to you because you have bad knees or bad hips, or you get to be a certain age and you don't need your second floor, but you're renting to the border, you know, to just get some extra income so you can pay your taxes. But I thought that there were special laws concerning condominiums and also third floors for fire issues. And I do remember the inside of Mr. Teager's house. He often is outside, if not 90% of his life, and leaving doors open downstairs that are common in an entranceway. And I think that I remember reading with condominiums or with borders, you must provide locks to keep them secure, that either that be on a bedroom, but by virtue of the nature of the way the house is built, and it's a third floor, not a second floor, that for fire reasons, to prevent fire, to also prevent somebody from coming in on him, or if I had this in my house, I would not take a door down, I would keep a door. I don't see why a door would be an issue on another floor. You still have access to that floor if you want it. And I think it's dangerous for a lot of elderly people that want to stay in this neighborhood, that need the extra income from a border, or the safety of a company, and they never use that second floor or third floor of their apartments. Because they don't have to, or they physically can't. So that concerns me about this. And I'm not sure how the condominium law plays into it, you know, you guys can look at that. But I wouldn't want to be restricted that I couldn't have a border in my home because I can't access the floor, or because I have a door on a second floor. That, that doesn't make any sense. I'm done.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Greg, someone else is there?
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. We have Sue McCrory, you're, you're on.
Hi, I just wanted to suggest that I believe the way the code is structured, rumor and border are distinct categories of individuals, and we really, I think, should look at the definitions of each, I guess dictionary definitions, in light of the fact that there is no definition in the code. So I think that would be the typical way of trying to figure out what statutory interpretation is here. And when I've looked these terms up, it seems like a rumor is just somebody who rents rooms. There's no obligation that a rumor take meals or be otherwise integrated into the household. But I'll leave it to you to look up those definitions. I just, I feel like we're, the board would benefit from, for lack of a definition, just going to a dictionary definition for these terms and seeing how they apply. And then you can move from, if there's a person in the household who is not a family member, and is living somewhere in the, in that unit, and in this case, it's a condominium unit. So if there was going to be a forced dwelling unit, it has to be a condominium. I don't know what it may make, you know, the added space, a condominium. It seems kind of odd that, how you would do that. But in any case, I would suggest, look at the definitions to understand, and try to ascertain what would convert a space that a rumor could live in into a dwelling unit. If, and, and see if you can figure out the definite, distinction, the definitions there. And just in terms of, I believe you may have precedent from the zoning board about what is the distinction between a space having cooking facilities and becoming a dwelling unit. And I say that because my property has a small guest house, and that, that house needed a variance, that little cottage needed a variance to be reconstructed. And I was told that the variance was granted and the reconstruction was allowed only because the cottage was built without cooking facilities. So it has, it has a refrigerator, it does not have a stove or an oven. And that's been my 20-year understanding of the distinction that the zoning board itself has used to distinguish, and my little cottage could be a place where a rumor could be, but if I put a stove in there, I've always been told that would make it an illegal additional dwelling unit. So you may have some precedents from other cases that would bear on this question, because I'm not the only.
Could we find that application?
I can look for it, and I guess you could find it. Wasn't there one up on Oak Road where there was a cottage that had a kitchen? Maybe I'm misremembering. But in any case, so I think you may have already reached this question, at least on my property, that if you put, you know, a space that could accommodate a separate family isn't a dwelling unit until it gets cooking facilities. That's what sort of happened at my property, or at least that's what I was.
Pardon?
That was, that was just an echo, you were hearing yourself.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Again, please raise your hand, and I'll unmute you. I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. We need to have, we board members need to have a long, appears that we're going to need to have some long discussions about this, and we also need to get all of the materials that Mr. Teager and anyone else wishes to submit. So my suggestion is that we table the rest of our discussion today. We've had all this discussion, we can all go home and think about it, we will get Mr. Teager's materials 15, not less than 15 days before the, not later than 15 days before the next meeting. And that at the next meeting, we reserve or recognize that we're going to need a time to discuss this.
That date would be May 20th.
Greta, did you have something?
I was gonna say, it'd be so great if we really could find some applications that dealt with this issue, and we, so we could see how this was decided by previous boards, so we could be in line with those decisions.
And I recall, I have to say that based on Sue McCrory's comment, I vaguely recall that sometime earlier in my tenure, we had an issue like that, but that didn't answer the question of whether or not a microwave satisfied the requirement. That's the thing, we didn't, the issue of whether a microwave is adequate to suffice is different from, is, is part of our issue now, I think, whether a microwave surprises. So I don't know that we ever dealt with that one. And I do think he's right that it did come, that something came to the board, where there was discussion about it with a separate cottage, with a separate, you know, there was a separate cottage. So I do think there was, I have no recollection of exactly what it was or where it was.
I remember it was on Oakland, it was a pool house, there was, it was an existing, like, had been a gatekeeper's house, and it was a pool house, and neighbors had, they wanted to do some renovations, and some neighbors had brought this to the ZBA because they felt it was. And I remember the question we asked them was, do you have cooking facilities inside? And they actually did. So I remember that we were thinking, I, I thought you had said, oh, okay, well then that certainly sounds like a separate dwelling, that made a big difference. And we found in the, that they were simply doing health or, you know, it was required by health or whatever to fix, so that's why they were able to go on with what they wanted to do.
But that didn't answer the question, that didn't answer the question of that we have, that we have here is, right, if there was no, if there was, does a microwave satisfy the requirement of a cooking facility? So I know we didn't deal with that question then, whatever the address of that is. But if, if, I don't know if Betty Ann has any recollection, but if you can think of the address, either Sue, if you're listening, or Meg, if you can, I can't, I could tell you now, and if Betty Ann can. So then we would be good to get a copy of that, just to see what the decision actually said. And if you can't, we, I mean, because it's too vague, we can't. Okay, so this will be continued to the next meeting, where we will get all submittals by Mr. Teager 15 days before the meeting, and we will make sure to reserve a significant amount of time Okay. This matter is adjourned.
Your submission deadline is 20.
May 20th, yes.
And your meeting date is the 4th.
Correct.
The submission deadline for, not for new applications, but for the 15-day submittal deadline, right?
Yeah. The 15 days is May 20th.
Just want to make sure that's clear on the record for Mr. Teager understanding.
Okay.
And the building inspector and code officers, they understand, if they need to get you anything, it's 20.
Okay. Very good. Now moving on to item two on the, on the public hearing calendar. Item 31A 2019, Dominic Brescia for Capetta 172 East Prospect Avenue.
I'll ask if you could raise your hand, so I can find you at the top. Okay. Oops.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Kristina, Donna, Silverberg, Zalantis, on behalf of the applicant. Also here this evening is Dominic Brescia. I hope you're all doing well. So I guess there's several issues before the board this evening. Just to briefly recap why we're here and how we started, we were just trying to go forward with a project that was approved. It went through a nearly year-long land use review process and was approved by four different boards, with the preferred design by all of the boards that provided for less units than what's the zoning compliant design. And as you know, the applicant has already started construction on the site, including demolishing the existing structure. So right now, all we have is a vacant lot, which doesn't really benefit anyone. The applicant is certainly in a unique situation. Mr. Cutler already confirmed for this board that it is the only project that has gotten all of its approvals and started construction that is required to comply with the new zoning. And it's a project that when the village board was looking at their zoning text amendments, it did not complicate, contemplate any fair and affordable housing units for this property. That being said, as we included in our most recent submission, if the board were agreeable to it, the applicant would be willing to reduce the variance request to only one fair and affordable housing unit. So there, the issue that was raised initially at the last meeting was the status of the variances that were granted with respect to the FAR, the floor area ratio, as well as the stories for the structure. We did submit an application for an interpretation, and alternatively, an extension or renewal of those variances. The way that the condition was worded in the approval resolution was not the same as what's in the code. And it said that a building permit must be issued in a year, only when necessary to comply with law. There's not that qualifying language in the code with respect to having to comply with law. And so in this situation, it kind of makes sense, given that complicated application, there were several approvals that were required, and we had to go through a lengthy and thorough land use review process. So the argument could be made, and we admit that we were not required to get a building permit within one year because of the different language that was in the condition of the resolution. But if the board were to find that we were required to get a building permit within a year, we actually did so. And we provided a lot of language from the actual permit as, language in the code to support that the permit that the applicant received for the demolition of the structure and removal of the tanks was in fact a building permit. And that was issued less than a year after this board's original approval of the rest of the FAR and stories variances. The applicant was required to pay a building permit application fee and a building permit fee, and the permit itself actually refers to itself as a building permit. In addition, the code requires a building permit for certain levels of construction, and it lists various different items. One of them is demolition. So anything that you do requires a building permit under the code, that's how it's provided for, both the building code and the zoning code. And so where we got a permit for demolition, that was in fact a building permit, because it permitted activities that under the code are only allowed with a building permit. So that is our request for an interpretation that the board determined that we did actually, that we were not, first of all, that it wasn't required to get one within a year, but if we were required to get a building permit within a year, that we did in fact do so.
Are you done, Kristina?
Well, I, I can go through everything else. I don't know if you want, if you want, or, I could just go through everything, and then I guess you can address them.
Yeah, but please go through anything new, don't, you don't have to repeat anything that you've previously discussed with us, you know, just things that you are adding to or raising today in response to new comments, rather than everything.
Understood, understood. I'll, I'll be very brief. So if the board were not inclined to grant our interpretation request, then we did submit a request for extension and/or reapproval of those variances. And I've said this in previous meetings, just to say that those two variances were directly related to the loft-style design of, of the units. The stories were because each level of units was considered two stories, even though it was only one apartment on each level, and the FAR because of the height of the ceilings, calculated the FAR at factor of 1.1, the FAR are higher than it otherwise would for standard one-bedroom units. So we submit, because they're just related to the design of those units, that it's, there's a legitimate basis to extend or reapprove those variances. To our vesting argument, we submitted that at the request of this board, we understand, and we were forthcoming with the board, that it was the village attorney's position that we were not vested. We did provide an analysis of the Exeter case that was referenced last month, and how it does actually support the premise that a conditional final site plan approval could form the basis for a vesting argument. And in that case, the, the board, the court of appeals, which was the highest court in the state, found that while they didn't get to that question, but left it open as a possibility, that it wasn't appropriate to have vesting in that case, in the Exeter case, because there wasn't reasonable reliance on the approvals. And the reasonable reliance wasn't, wasn't, the reliance wasn't reasonable because the property had already been zoned when the approval was granted, and the applicant knew that, and it was in the actual resolution, and the court looked at that. That's certainly not the case here, because the, as you all know, the property was not rezoned until many months after the last approval was granted. And we did also receive the additional case law that has, that was provided by the village attorney earlier this week. We did not have a lot of time, but we were able to look at them, and we And we don't believe that any of them are conclusive on this issue. The, one of the cases, in addition to the Court of Appeals Exeter case that I just referenced, was the, was the appellate division, the, the intermediate appellate division Exeter case, which had a different holding, which said that conditional final site plan approval was not a basis for vesting. And then the higher court, the Court of Appeals, said, no, we don't agree with that necessarily. It could possibly be, but we don't get there because there wasn't reasonable reliance. The Marvera Corp. case, that dealt with subdivision approval and general improvements that were made, not with respect to a specific development. And the RC Enterprises case was a very unique situation in that site plan approval had been granted in two phases in 1972. Phase one was fully constructed, which was its own multifamily residential, but nothing was ever done with phase two. And then the applicant came back in after the property was rezoned in 2005 and tried to rely on that. So it's obviously very different, given that decades upon decades had passed since original approval. And so the court found that there was no basis for vesting and reliance upon those approvals. That's, here, that's not the case. We relied upon the approvals, the applicant went forward, they did site work, and I, I won't repeat what you already know. And then the other alternative that we've discussed at prior meetings is that if the board is not inclined to find a finding of vesting, then there's still the issue of the variance. This is in the zoning code. The, the requirement for affordable housing, fair and affordable housing units is in the zoning code. And so this board is authorized by law, both state law and the code, to vary those requirements. So we would ask that if you're not inclined to find that we're vested, then that you move forward with considering the variance application, which we have previously argued and submitted information to this board, try to show that it is an area variance. And I, again, I've made all those arguments to you, but it's not, the use doesn't change. It's still a residential use, and it's just like all of the other requirements on that use. But it's not something that's prescribed by the zoning code, which is what you see with use variances. And lastly, there was a case that was raised at the last meeting, which we were provided afterwards, Homes of Hope Inc. And we did address that case in our submission. We don't think it's controlling because it's a New Jersey case that was governed by New Jersey statutes and case law. In addition, in those facts, it was very different. The reason why the applicant needed a use variance did not have to do with the fact that they were actually proposing affordable housing, but because they were planning to expand a pre-existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling in a single-family residential district. And the relevance of the affordable housing in that case was based upon the applicant's argument that the existence of affordable housing formed a basis for approving the use variance. So that's really apples to oranges with respect to something like this. And so, and we've submitted to you our analysis of why we believe that we satisfy the criteria for an area variance, and I've gone over it with you before. And I will just remind the board that the applicant is willing to reduce the variance requested from two units to one.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions for Ms. Adona? Before we get into discussion? No. Okay. Does anyone from the public wish to address this application?
Okay. We've got Glenn. You are up.
Good evening, board. I hope you're all staying healthy in this period of the virus. Um, just to point out something with the history of this application. One of the reasons that they took so long, because they started the process long before the village changed its laws. And one of the reasons is they could have, by right, built a cookie, a cookie cutter building that was larger without any style, any ambiance to the neighborhood, and just dumped it on the village of Amerenick. They went through a lengthy, lengthy process with the planning board, because the planning board wanted, and the other boards wanted, they wanted the way the windows were, they wanted the setbacks, they wanted restrictions on use of the roof. They went through and jumped through hoops in order to satisfy the different boards and actually made a project that was less dense than they could have actually built if they just built as and as right. And one of the reasons that they got caught in this problem is that it took such a long process for them to get through in order to come and come to an agreement on what the plans look like and such, that a clock that they didn't even knew existed suddenly ran out on them. And you've had a lot of talk in this village about good development, bad developers and such. This is a developer who, men, opened into the community, tried to put a project that fit the needs of this community as law was written, went out of their way above what they had to do in order to satisfy the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and every other board in this. And now they're put in a position where literally, it's not their fault, it's the government letting them down. And this is your chance to write something that went wrong with the system. That's one of the things you're looking at. The fact that they are willing to compromise with the one apartment, I think at this point, you have to look at, as a whole, the, the amount of time that they spent on this project. We're not talking about one, we're talking two, three years in order to get this project done, working with all of our boards. And at this point, it's your duty as the trustees for, for, you know, of, of the Board of Appeals to honor the work that they put in, working with the village of Amerenick to do a project that would better our village. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Sue McCrory. You're on.
Hi, I'm Sue McCrory. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I sent in comments, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I do believe the board needs to determine whether or not this building complies with multiple dwellings law. I'm concerned that it does not, and that the whole question of vested rights turns on the fact that the plans that were approved, whether you think a site plan is enough or it really requires it to be compliant with laws that preceded the zoning amendments. And I'm unconvinced that the 18-unit application meets multiple dwellings law. Thank you.
Anybody else have any, any, oh, sorry, go ahead, anyone else from the public?
And again, please use the raise your hand feature. Okay. We've got Penny Chumley. Okay, you're on.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd have a couple of comments. I've commented about this project on numerous occasions, as it is right across the river and therefore is going to be a big part of our lives, should it be completed. The reason, there's a number of different things I can say. One is, I would, unlike Glenn, I feel that this process is working well. This project was the last project in a series of really horrible decisions that were made for multifamily dwellings in this village that actually led to the moratorium. And so what this process does is, this is actually making sure that we, that this, that this group is doing what's right for the village and ensuring that our village maintains the integrity, the charm, and the appeal that it does today. The, you know, there's a conversation in the new application about the time limit and how they were so expedient with the time and that they, never mind the whole building permit being a building permit, when it's actually a demolition permit. The reason that they didn't get to this building in the time that maybe would have been considered expedient was really because they had so many other building projects going on in the village that were in mired and in their own messes, that they didn't have time to focus on this one. So they focused on the ones that they were already working on, thinking that they had this in the bag and that they beat the, the moratorium limit, and they could just come back to it whenever they felt like it. And so the fact that they only got a demolition permit, which is not a building permit, is actually, they're, they're hubris in thinking that they would be able to just continue to develop in the village as they had in all of their previous time of development. For them to, to ever have any sort of feeling that, or opinion that they were caught by surprise or didn't know that there were going to be these zoning changes that were going to be coming, the conversations about the moratorium had been happening for quite some time. It did not just come upon the village out of nowhere. And that, the conversations around the new comprehensive plan for the village has also been a conversation that has been going on for quite some time. So as, as active developers in the village for as long as they have been on as many projects as they have been, for them to think that in any way that this project was, was somehow, that all of the changes were somehow a surprise to them is, is ingenuous for certain that, at the very least. As far as the, the question of vesting, I am not an attorney, so I therefore don't really have an opinion about vesting. However, what I can say is, if, if, it's, Capetta could certainly recoup the costs that they have had to invest, because they, the work that they have done would have had to been done, no matter what was going to go in the place where House of Honda was. And they could certainly sell that property for more than they paid for it, plus they're covering costs for the development of a project that is more appropriate to that location and to the village. Finally, I would like to say that on page 12, sorry about that, I lost my place. On page 12, there's, they cited a couple of different
Excuse me.
reasons why they should be, why they should be approved. One of them, they're saying is, sorry. Sorry, excuse me, is whether an undesirable change will be
Is this the last letter that the attorney sent? Page 12 is what?
Correct. Page 12 is the last letter that they sent. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. As someone who is a homeowner of a nearby property, I can tell you without question that this process, that this project will be a detriment to the value of our, and the character of our neighborhood and the, the neighborhood around our beautiful river. It, our beautiful river does not need to have another gigantic multifamily dwelling. On the next page, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, I would again say, we do not need it. Anyone who lives in this area knows that all of the noise comes into this, every sound comes into this area where the little valley where the river runs through, and it echoes through. To have an additional 18 to 22 units crammed into our already crowded space, we've had numerous conversations about the traffic and what that's going to do. And then finally, I really just, there's, there's a note in there that is also sort of strikes me as ingenuous about that they intend, that the developer intends to comply with affordable housing requirements for future development. Like, that's not, I'm not loving that statement. And then, I guess finally, on the variance, for me, the variance on it, it's not about the stories, that it's four stories versus five stories, it's actually the height. If you look at the height of the building that they propose in either of their proposals, the height is higher than a story, you know, a nine-foot room versus a 12-foot ceiling versus a 14-foot ceiling. It's all one story, but the height is very different. So it's not, it's about the building height. And so I, so I, I think I concur with the previous caller in that this is, and I will continue to say, this is not the right project for that space, this, these variances, three variances on zoning seems like a lot of variances to me. And what's the point of having zoning if you just get variances for all of it? So I would, I would strongly recommend that this board decline all of the variances and that this developer sell the property, and we look for something that's more appropriate for our neighborhood to go in that space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, Greg?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Nothing.
Okay. So this is another one that's going to require a lot of discussion, but, but I kind of broke it down for what I think the board needs to, because there's a lot of pieces here. So in order to get to them, we have the following decisions we have to make, and each one leads to something else. So the first question is, because we can't decide what variance they need, variances they need or whether they're vested, unless we decide first whether the prior approval lapsed. I'm, I'm not making any conclusions, I'm just laying out the issues we have to deal with. So the first question we have to decide is, did the prior approval lapse? If we determine that the prior approval lapsed, then they will need either, we either need to grant an extension, well, no, no, sorry. With the question of did the prior prove, we have to either grant, and if we decided did, then we have to either grant an extension of those variances, or we have to grant completely new variances for those two variances that they got before. So that's the first thing. If we decide that the prior approval did not lapse, that simply means they don't have to get new variances for those two items that they got variances for before. Okay. So the next step, once we've determined about whether or not those, those previous variances have to be reissued or renewed or extended, is if we, if we determine that the prior approval did not lapse, then we go straight to the next question of, are they vested? Okay? If they did lapse, then we have to grant new ones or extend. If they did not lapse, then our issue is, are they vested? Okay. Now, if we determine that they are not, that they are vested, then this whole review ends. If we determine that they are not vested, then we get back to the original question, which is, does the, do they, is that they will need a variance? And the only question then is, is it, which is where we started, a use or an area? So I think we need to take those sort of three sets of questions separately to move on to the next. Because without getting to the earlier ones, we can't get to the later one. So I think the first question we have to discuss is, did the prior approval lapse? So.
I'd just like to add, I like the way that you're making it in these, in these steps. We did get the information from Ms. McCrory that she wonders if it was, if multiple dwellings law had been applied, and if they are in compliance with multiple dwellings law. And perhaps we could ask Frank, but whether or not they would get approval, or was this another variance? Because they never got a building permit, they got site plan approval, the planning board's not a zoning board. Did they, are they compliant with multiple dwellings law?
Well, I will just, I want to read you, because I don't think that the information that Ms. McCrory gave was complete. So I want to give you some information. So really, what she seems to be saying is whether they have window, where the windows open out. And what the multiple dwelling law says is the following, and we have to separate windows, there are two kinds of windows. Euphemistically, they're called legal windows or not windows. Under the multiple dwelling law, every room except every room except for a hallway and a bathroom and possibly a kitchen needs to have what's called legal light and air that meets certain size requirements, certain depth requirements, various requirements of the multiple dwelling law. So if a, let's say a bedroom, if a bedroom has two windows and one of those windows satisfies the requirements for legal light and air, i.e. it provides the right amount of light and air and meets the multiple dwelling law, then it doesn't matter what the other window does. And so if the other window looked out on something that you could build a building immediately next to it, it doesn't matter. Okay, just doesn't matter at all. So however, if the only window is a window that looks out on, you know, a side yard and somebody could build a building abutting that, then that isn't legal. Okay, so, so we have to separate that with respect to where the windows are because one point she raised was, there are windows that open right next to the property to the side. Okay, the multiple dwelling law says that, what does it mean to have legal light and air? And again, it doesn't use the term legal light and air, but it's sort of a euphemism that gets used all the time. So in order to have legal light in there, you have to have the window meeting the size requirement that, and I will read the multiple dwelling law provision from section 30 of the multiple dwelling law. Every room of a block shall have at least one window opening directly upon a street or upon a lawful yard or upon a lawful yard, court, or space above a setback upon the same lot as that occupied by the multiple dwelling. So what she was saying is that we have two, we have windows that are on essentially a property line and face the neighbor. And again, as I said, if those are not needed to provide legal light and air, then it doesn't matter. And then she says that there are windows that open up on the, like the porch, this lower, the second floor, which is a lower level. That would be a legal setback upon the same lot. Those windows would be, would comply with the requirements of the multiple dwelling law. And so I think that, that ends, I think that's the simple answer to her points. Frank, do you want to give your
To the point about whether it complies with multiple dwelling, what we go by in the building department is the 2015 Energy Code. And to that code, for new construction, that's what we're looking for, and it does comply. The multiple dwelling law was created in 1930. I mean, it's, I don't, I'm not going by that. I'm going by the Energy Code of 2015 and it does comply for light and air.
But we did adopt the multiple dwellings law and so they, even if it was something that you could easily explain is fine the way it's set up now and is an antiquated law, we don't have anything codified that if you satisfy whatever it is that you just mentioned, that everything's fine. It would seem that they would need a variance if they're not complying with the multiple dwellings law. But I understand Robin is explaining to us about the windows. She doesn't seem to think that they're not complying. But I wanted to bring up that I went to look at the multiple dwellings law and it talked about the requirement of a rear yard. So it seems to say it's an interior lot because I think it's a road that curves around. It's an interior lot that needs a rear yard and for sure need help with this, but it certainly seems that the rear yard is supposed to be at least 30 feet. And I could be misreading this, but I do see something about a rear yard in the back.
This is a corner lot. Corner lots don't need rear yards.
I understand that. I think on their other project across the street, they're saying that that house, that one's not on a corner. They're talking about is the same prospect, it's just one street and it curves. So I think there's a little bit of a question of whether or not, they're calling their other one not on a corner, they're calling, I think that that's a little bit of a question. And also when I'm reading this, it talks about windows needing to out onto a yard or a court.
Or lawful setback.
Right, right. The windows in the back, I'm sure they're great light and air, I'm not saying that, but are they overlooking a court of a certain size? Or are they so close to the lot line that they're not actually overlooking a court as required by the multiple dwellings law?
Again, they would only need to be overlooking a yard, a court, or setback on the same lot if they are providing legal light and air. If they are the additional window, then it doesn't matter at all.
So it's, they have a bedroom in the back of this loft because the loft doesn't extend all the way to the front. So the bedroom loft area must have to have a window. So the one that sticks towards the back, I would think, has to be one of those required windows that you're referring to.
I haven't looked at the
Where it would be. And so, and I look in the back, it seems to be there's a diagonal line and it seems to be quite skinny in places behind. So I wondered if it has the right size court or rear yard, assuming that those bedroom windows are required windows. Or if this is not considered an interior lot and not a corner lot, then it requires a rear yard. The building department look into that or yeah, or the applicant themselves?
Well, we, this was, we did receive a copy of this comment, which was also raised earlier this week. So we did look into this a little bit. And what we found is that, I mean, just as an initial matter, this is a project that was, as I've said, before the boards for a year and was before this board and we got our approvals and this was never raised as an issue. So it's really not something that has been, anything that we could have addressed previously. There are other residential developments, including this one, that were approved without having to comply with those bulk requirements. We've seen numerous denial letters from the building inspector throughout this process and he has not opined that it's not in compliance. That being said, the bulk requirements are set forth in the zoning code. And I understand that this board's position is that there's separate requirements for each codes, but the zoning code is what looks at the bulk and where a property, a project can be located. And this, the village, the village board, as you all well know, looked at the C1, the C2, and the TOD districts for zoning, for zoning and specifically for residential uses for a long time. And what they ended up doing was they adopted rules and regulations, including bulk requirements and including setback requirements that they thought were appropriate for those locations where these zones are located. And in that local law that they adopted, there's a section 10 of the law that says, "This law will supersede the provisions of village law to the extent they are inconsistent with this law." And the multiple dwellings law does not automatically apply to any specific municipality. The village had to adopt it into its code. Therefore, it has adopted as part of this local law a question saying, what we did in the zoning code, what we looked at for over a year, what we adopted as far as setbacks go, that's going to supersede what's inconsistent with other provisions of the code. And so I think that kind of puts in context where multiple dwellings law fits in this situation. And if you started applying this to all of the properties that it could potentially apply to, it would significantly diminish the amount of properties that would be able to develop residential properties as the village board was contemplating when it looked at all of these issues and decided on these text amendments. And the reality is that the multiple dwellings law, it is antiquated and it's general. It's not specific to this zone, to this village. They have a permitted FAR of 12. The village allows an FAR of two. You know, they, they require a setback of 30 feet for up to 125-foot structure, that's 12 stories. The village only allows four and 40 feet. So there's some serious discrepancies between what's in the multiple dwellings law and what the village board adopted. And it did seem to specifically say, what's in the, what's in the zoning code is what governed. So I would just ask that the board consider that also.
That's very interesting. But I also just want to, but you know, as we were setting in the last, in our last application, we are just looking at this building. We're not looking at what this means for other buildings. We're not looking at whether or not other buildings were built and didn't comply and should have complied. We are not looking at that, we are looking at this particular application. Whenever one law is more restricted than the other, that's the one that will take precedent. So if it requires a backyard and our, our village law doesn't require a rear yard, that's what would take precedent. But however, Kristy, I am interested in what you just cited, that you were saying that it said that it's not to the contrary and I will take a look at that.
If I may, this won't help your decision, but I was with the village at the time when the multiple dwellings law was adopted and there was no discussion about the adoption of it superseding zoning code in any way. It, I think it might, based on what the code says, but at the time, there was no intention to adopt the FARs or the bulk requirements of the multiple dwellings law. It was mostly focused on safety requirements, lighting, locks on doors and things of that nature. Doesn't change your decision, just
The multiple dwelling law does not tell us what our FAR is. The multiple dwelling law sets maximums and minimums for certain things. And that is it. So the fact that there's a maximum FAR of 12 has nothing to do with what the maximum FAR in the village is. The maximum heights and the required height setback have nothing to do with what the village is. It's not like they're superseding, it's unrelated, you can't mix apples and oranges. But, hang on one second, let me just finish one thing and then I'll defer to you. I wasn't quite, Kristy, can you repeat what law it was that said this thing that you were just talking about? That's the first thing. The second thing, I have a question, which really is a question for our council. We are an appellate body. The whole issue of whether or not this complies with the multiple dwelling one, really whether the other one, you know, whether, because it's not really the question before us. We are an appellate body, can we raise issues like that in our considerations? It's come up before, but I really think we need to make sure we can. Because we're raising completely new issues that weren't raised by the building inspector, haven't been briefed, haven't been by the applicants, haven't been discussed. Do, can we do that?
No, I think you're allowed to do what's reasonable. If you want me to look further into it, I'm happy to and write a memo for you. But I think as long as you're reasonable as a board, you know, and you're not being arbitrary or capricious, I think, you know, you have, you're allowed to do so.
Fine, okay, Doug, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so the provision that I'm referring to is the, the actual local law that was adopted by the village board in, I'm just trying to find it.
2014, March.
Oh, no, in August of 2019.
The moratorium, okay.
If the, if the village law that you're referring to, Kristy, was adopted in 2019, it wouldn't apply to the application that was approved prior to 2019. So if you are vested, you are vested with respect to the law that existed before 2019 because then the 2019 law wouldn't apply. So you're, you can't say this piece of the 2019 law applies, but not the rest of the 2019 law applies. So I think, I'm not sure that it's relevant. Doug, you, I'm sorry, I kind of cut you off earlier on, I think.
I mean, that's okay. The main thing that everybody, you know, and I hate to keep passing the same stuff. Whatever the more stringent applies, whatever it is. If zoning is more stringent than the multiple dwelling, zoning applies. If there's sections in the multiple dwelling that are more stringent than the zoning, they would apply. But, I mean, right now, and the question I have is exactly what you brought up, Robin. We are now hearing about a multiple dwelling law compliance on this application that we've never heard before.
If I could clarify something from before, I just wanted to be clear that what I was trying to say is that the only thing that was discussed when the board was adopting multiple dwellings law was providing tenants a recourse for unsafe conditions so that there would have to be peepholes, mailboxes, and lighting and things of that nature.
Yeah, Greg, the interesting thing about that is they adopted everything except for three sections. And, you know, I, and I, you know, I know what you're saying, what the intent was because I remember the arguments when that was going up. But what they did was they adopted everything except three sections and
What three sections?
That's what I'm gonna, I look, I don't know if you can see this or not, but this is the multiple dwelling law they adopted. I think it only goes up to, hold on a second.
Could I make a point while, while you're looking or should I wait?
No, go ahead, I have it all the way up to section 11, wait, hold on. If I'm not mistaken, they excluded six. If I'm not mistaken, they excluded six, seven, eight and nine.
Those are four sections.
Actually
There is no six or seven.
No, I understand that, but you see, the multiple dwelling law goes all the way up to Article 11.
Right.
Which goes all the way up to section 36567. Okay? They didn't adopt every one of the articles. They adopted sections that were removed out of those articles. And I'm trying to find the memo or the law that tells me exactly which ones they accepted. But, you know, there are some that were not included in the law. But what Greg, what Greg was saying was, yeah, that's what the gist of what they were talking about. But when they adopted the law, they only took out some sections and didn't go through and take out everything except for the safety of the tenants and so
Yeah, I agree. It's, they adopted almost all of it.
They almost, they adopted a retiring law, but that's not what they were looking at. They were looking at a narrow section of law and they adopted it all, almost all of it.
So then it's a part of our zoning code and if it seems archaic, people could come for a variance, but we, they should be coming for a variance.
It's not, it's not part of your zoning code, it's a separate code.
It's a separate, it's, it's a separate law that falls under the building department building code, okay? And, you know, it's, and with that being said, the Energy Code, in my opinion, would hold more precedence than the multiple resident law when it comes to these types of, these types of applications. And that's only my opinion.
I'd like to understand that better, just what kind of law? Because I didn't understand that it was a building code and we do not opine on the building, you know.
If it's part of a zoning applica, if it, if it has to deal with the compliance of a zoning application, I believe we do have to consider it. Because most of the determinations in the building department, okay, when they look at it, first they look at the building code sections of it and where the building code and there appears to be a variance request, okay? They would, they don't comply with the zoning. They will pinpoint that and bring it to zoning, okay? But if there is a building code discrepancy, that can also be brought to zoning.
Can I just ask, so, so that, Robin, before we keep going on here, you had said that the first thing we need to decide is whether we
Whether they lapse, whether the prior approval lapses.
Right, so maybe we should focus on that first?
That's fine. I mean, I think, the issue with the multiple dwelling law is I think what Meg was saying in response to what Sue McCrory agrees was, if the application didn't in fact comply with the multiple dwelling law, then arguably it was never permitted in the first place and therefore it couldn't, you didn't have something. I think this whole issue of figuring this out honestly, I think the whole multiple dwelling law issue gets into, I mean, until this year, I don't recall the board ever considering whether or not, or maybe last year, until last year and in the other X years that I've been on the board and Doug's been on the board many years too in prior years, I never dealt with the issue of whether something complied with the multiple dwelling law. It just didn't come up. It wasn't, we, we, the board just kind of, that was something left to the building department. So this is all sort of newly, new issues that were, had not been previously raised. Doug, did you, so, but I would say, but, but I would, I mean, I'm with you. I think that this is the question that we need to come up with. Did the prior approval lapse? And let's just, we can get bogged down on the multiple dwelling law not knowing the answer to the question. And
The prior approval is associated with a building permit, correct?
Yes.
I think the question is, a demolition permit is not a building I think the question is, a demolition permit is not a building permit.
Well, there, I think the applicant is raising a different, the applicant is saying something else. The applicant is quoting from the, which I thought was interesting, and I, we have to think about it, but the applicant was quoting from, and he, and set forth in her statement, was that the, we, the, what, what the, so two things. So, so let's separate the two things. The first point is, what did the, what was the condition of the variance? It said, a building permit has to be granted. That's what it says. Okay. Doesn't say what that means. It just says a building permit. All right. So she read to us from Village Code, which she quoted 126-4, that says, except as otherwise provided, and I'm assuming that doesn't apply, "A building permit shall be required for any work which must conform to the Uniform Code and/or the Energy Code, but not, including but not limited to demolition." So...
So are we deciding this now? Is this something that we're just discussing, or are we going?
We're just discussing. I wasn't, I mean, I mean, we could vote on it, because we have to narrow it down, but we don't have to vote. We don't have to, but let's lay it out now, so we know what we're talking about next week, right? The question that, right, this is what she's saying. I don't know that we weren't, I mean, we're not voting now, because we don't usually vote in the middle, but maybe we want to here. But let's get to the, for the first question, did it lapse? And the issue is, was a building permit issued? And she is saying, what is a building permit? Well, we don't define building permit per se, and here it says that "A building permit shall be required for any work which must conform to the Uniform Code and/or the Energy Code, including demolition," that the piece of paper that was issued, and then it says, "No person shall commence any work for which a building permit is required without first having obtained a building permit." So if a building permit, the term not defined, is required for demolition, as this seems to say, then the document that the building department issued is arguably a building permit. That was an interest to me. This was a very interesting concept. It's certainly never been raised before, but that is what our code says.
Now, let's ask Frank, what permit is issued?
Yep.
Frank, what is it issued?
It was a demolition permit.
So it was specifically a demolition permit?
It was, yes.
Now, let me, but, but that doesn't mean it wasn't a building permit. I have you this question. Did the demolition have to conform to the Uniform Code and/or the Energy Code?
Does it have to? Yes.
Then by, then by our own...
Wait, 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 in terms of what? Wait, don't say, in terms of what?
I'm just reading. I have no idea in terms of what. It's, this is what our code says. Look at Village Code 126-4.
Excuse me, I have to quiet my pup down. She's making noise.
Can we discuss whether or not we think, though, that it means a building permit required, struck, kept, building permit required to construct what you got the variance for? We had a resolution to approve a variance, and it says, in some shape or form, that you have a certain length of time to get the permit and then to complete the construction. And I cannot imagine that they were saying, you need, you got a building permit to do a garden shed in the corner, that that would be okay, or you got a building permit to, I don't know if you need a building permit for sidewalks, or you need a building permit for something else that really has nothing to do, happens to be on the same lot, but has nothing to do with what you got the variances for. That seems pretty arbitrary, that you could just find some way to get a building permit to satisfy this requirement. I don't think that that's what it is. I think it's the building permit to enable you to construct the project that you got the variance.
Well, exactly, not that clear, because...
If I could just, I could just, really quick, and I understand that they believe, you know, they're arguing that the demolition was part of it, but at, I think it was to Abby's point, I don't agree. I think that it was preparation to be any kind of project, so it was not specific to this, the building of this building. That's how I see it.
Well, you know, Robin, let me go this, let me go this before. Let me answer your question, because you said, does it have to comply with the building code and the Energy Code? The answer, a demolition permit does not have to comply to any Energy Code whatsoever.
Does it have to comply with the Uniform Code?
What?
Does it have to comply with the Uniform Code? I don't know what Uniform Code it means, but Uniform Code.
That, that's the Uniform Building Code of State of New York, is what it, what it comply, what it, is what it says, okay? Does it have to comply to the Uniform Building Code? Frank?
You know, you can...
I know the answer, but I'm not going to say it.
Yeah, I, I think it does. I think it does.
I think it doesn't.
I think it does.
The only thing that would comply to it, the only thing that would comply to it is the safety with respects to...
Right.
Fencing. It has nothing to do with the building code. It has to deal with site safety and the requirements of what you can do in your demolition.
Right. But they can all, but you can all...
We're starting to discuss this application, and it's kind of late, and we have more applications, and people are waiting to present their applications. It seems that we should wait to have this discussion.
Okay, but let's, so, so, okay, so I repeat, so then, again, and we may need, depending on how many applications are pending, Betty Ann, how many applications are pending for the next meeting?
Next agenda's not really full. We have one pending application. So whatever you carry over, you carry over.
Okay, so, so then I think that we, that's fine. That seems right. I think you should, I think that's right. Let's carry over this discussion, but think about it in the way that I laid it out.
Yeah, and I, I think it'll give us time to do some research and to get some real answers.
Fine. You have closed the application, and then just go into discussing this? Are we keeping the application?
I, I think we're going to need to give the applicant a chance to respond to, to respond to whatever we're talking about.
I think we can leave it open.
Leave it open. I think we should...
For new things. For only new points from everybody.
Can I ask a question, please? This resolution, this is the language of the board, this, you know, this language, this about the requirement of a building permit. This was language you, we, I was at the board at the time, but the board created, correct?
Yes.
This is your language.
Let's understand that this board doesn't create, this is boilerplate language that's on every single one. I don't think the board did not specifically, as it never does, sit there and go through, when, how long do they have to get a building permit? What's the requirements? How long they have to do it? It's boilerplate that's put in every application. So there was no specific discussion.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my, and this is, I don't want to prolong this either, because we have to go on to other applications, but without question, the applicant is coming, is coming with a very clever legal argument. That being said, when the board, you know, passed this resolution, they had a common understanding of what, what building permit meant. So, I mean, you know, you can have a legal, a very technical, clever legal analysis, or you can go with really what the common understanding of what that was when it was approved. And Robin and Meg were the two people on the board who were involved in approving that.
And I can tell you, from a person, I have never, until this application came before us, and actually, I never sat and thought about what exactly we mean when we put in every variance application that a building permit has to be obtained within one year. I have never thought about what it meant until this application came before me. So I can't say, what was my common understanding? I didn't have a common understanding. And think about it. It was just boilerplate.
Yeah, and let me say something, and Frank is correct. You got to read the first chapter of the Building Code, Frank. That's where it defines what's going on.
Okay.
Okay. Isn't that where it is? What article is it?
I don't have it. I don't...
I don't remember the article. I don't remember the article off the top of my head. But there is an article that, that gets in there and tells you.
You know, they, they can make the argument that, how can they go ahead with the rest of the project if they don't do the demolition first? So their argument is, is probably, they, their intent was to get a demolition permit in order to build a building. And it's taken, you know, a lot longer than they thought, and this is where we're at right now.
I can't speak to the zoning board's understanding of a building permit, but I know that on the planning board resolution, we say, prior to an issuance of a building permit, you have to be X, Y, and Z conditions, not, this has nothing to do with the expiration. But in those circumstances, the building permit was to construct the building, because at the time they submitted the demo permit and it was issued, none of those conditions had been met. Or, I don't know if none, but, you know, some of those conditions hadn't been met yet.
Yeah, no, it, it's a little complicated when you get into the code sections, because I, and I can't recall the article, of which article it is. I am going to have to read it. You know, I, I think it's, I think it's in Chapter 1. I'm not sure. By the way, you looked up the definition of building permit in the Building Code, which I have right here?
What does it say?
There is none.
Okay.
That goes along with, that goes along with everything else, right?
If I could just say one other thing, if you don't mind, before...
Oh.
I understand that, that this board has spent a lot of time on this application, and we certainly appreciate your efforts on this. We have been before this board for several months now, and, you know, we will get you that additional information that you requested, but we would just hope that the board can really consider trying to come to some sort of resolution next month, so that we could try to figure out how to move forward with this. Because if we don't, if we don't get relief from this board, we have to come up with something else, and that's going to be the zoning compliant plan with more units. And try, and, and so, you know, that's, that's the next step in this, if, if we don't get that relief here. And, and that's necessarily beneficial either because of the positive elements that I've already discussed for you. And I, and I understand that you want to put the time in, and you have other applicants waiting, but if I, if we could really just implore the board, I understand you should have a light agenda next month, so hopefully you'll be able to devote some time to it. But if we could just get some resolution one way or another, and, and if the board could start thinking about that for the next meeting, we'd appreciate it.
Listen, before we adjourn this, I did find the definition of permit. An official document or certificate issued by the building official that authorized performance of a specific, of a specified activity.
So it doesn't answer the question of whether this is a building permit as meant, but, okay.
I mean, you're trying, but if you think about it in those terms, a building permit is a very specified activity. Demolition is a very specified activity.
Exactly.
Plumbing is a very specified. Electrical is a very specified activity, okay? So if you're looking at it in those terms, if they issued a demolition permit, they didn't issue anything other than that, that is a very specified activity that they're permitted to perform. So, I don't know. Well, we have to adjourn this and really think about it.
Right. Okay, so I think we will continue this hearing for the next meeting, where just like with respect to the prior application, we will devote significant, you know, time to both of these discussions, and we just, that's what we're going to do. We'll, okay. So this is continued to, and hopefully resolve, or at least close both of those hearings, and possibly vote, or at least come to some, close to some conclusion on both of those next time. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, Kellin is number three, Kellin number eight SP 2020, nine SP 2020, and nine eight 2020, Jean Lum for 100, on 100 West Boston Post Road. I know he was here. There he is.
You're, you're unmuted, Jean. If you're on this, please raise your hand. Okay, you guys should all be able to speak. Hello?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
It looks like you're on mute.
Yeah, Jean, I think just muted himself, but Ted, I think you were going to start. Okay. Can you try talking, so we can?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. It's okay to start now?
To start, please.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Just to refresh, this is...
Introduce yourself first.
Oh, my name is Ted DiMori. I'm the architect for the project. Jean Lum is my client. And this is about 100 West Boston Post Road. We started last month speaking about the project and the area variances that we needed. And then after we discussed it for a while, the board decided that perhaps we should have gone for a use variance. And we went back, we took a look at the requirements, and we submitted data to support a use variance that hopefully you all have in front of you. And I can go over those, those points, point by point, if I should start there, or if you want me to go further back and recount anything from last month.
Please, just, just new things, please. We don't, you don't need to repeat anything that was said.
Okay. All right. So the points that have to be reviewed by you and proven by the applicant are, for use variance are, number one, whether the applicant is deprived of the economic use of the property. And we have submitted data that for the past year and a half, since the tenant went, since the owner went out, they have only leased for a little while, and they have not been able to find another tenant or a buyer to develop this property. We support, have supporting documentation from a Realtor that shows that he's been trying to lease it and to sell it, and we have not had success, except for the one tenant that was there for just a short while. So whether we had a financial loss, that information is in front of you too. In 2018, there was a $59,000 loss. In 2019, it was $85,000 lost. And 2020, it's just been a loss for the past four months, coming into this month. So that has been severe economic hardship. Whether the hardships are unique and applied to this property and not to other properties in the neighborhood, well, this building, one of the reasons, the unique thing about this building is it's got a very low ceiling height, and that's unlike any of the commercial buildings in Marinerneck. The rear third of the building where the restaurant kitchen was, was built at only seven foot 10 ceiling height, and that has discouraged everyone from coming in, because that extra third of the building means that the restaurant dining areas cannot expand into that area, and that has discouraged people, because they can't expand the number of tables, they can't maximize their income out of the space. out of the space. And there aren't any other, uh, uses that, uh, such as retail or other permitted uses in the area that have a use for a ceiling height for a fully one-third of the space that's only seven foot ten high. It's just too low and that's the unique characteristic of this building that, um, points to, uh, why we need a variance for that. The, uh, third item is whether the variance will alter the use of the neighborhood and, um, actually, uh, the proposed use for this, uh, tenant that wants to come in is to use it for a ghost kitchen, if you will, and, uh, one-third of the building has been used for a kitchen for the past fifty years and the fact that we want to use the whole area for a kitchen doesn't really point to a change in the neighborhood at all. We'll have, um, a few more people working there, but we won't have any cus-, we won't have nearly as many customers coming in, so there'd be a lot less traffic in the area. And the, um, fourth item is whether this hardship was self-created and, uh, it was not self-created, it was caused by economic conditions. The, um, uh, older Mr. Lum wanted to retire, he got out of the restaurant business, uh, Jean Lum went, uh, to find another job and, uh, they have a building that they have not been able to sell and that they've hot, not been able to rent, except they have one potential tenant to come in, uh, and it's not an approved use for this neighborhood. So it's not a self-created hardship, uh, for the Lums, it's a, uh, it's a circumstance. And that, um, I believe proves, uh, proves, proves the case. We submit that this application is, uh, complete in this way. Um, I have, uh, drawings of the building with me if you'd like me to get into the particulars, I can, uh, what area of the building I'm talking about. I can share the screen.
I have a question first.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the, on the real estate, you did have an offer on that building.
Uh, Jean can point to that. Uh, there was an offer and then when they started talking about it, the guy never came back and he wasn't serious.
Oh, okay.
Didn't follow up.
Okay.
There was too many contingencies on that offer.
Uh, I, I didn't, uh, gee, I didn't hear you?
Um, I apologize. The, the offer that was presented to us had too many contingencies on financing, so it was not a offer that was very
I, I, you don't have to say anything beyond that, I understand.
Right.
In, in the particulars of the, of the building, how does your restaurant compare to other ones on the avenue in terms of a third of it being used for a kitchen and how many tables you can put in the front? Is it, are there other restaurants in the avenue that, that have a lot more tables than what is available for you to be able to put in the serving area that you're talking about? Is that what they're saying?
Well, the conversations I've had with the, um, restaurateurs that have come in is that, uh, every one of them wanted more dining area than they had. They thought the kitchen was too big. So they, regardless of how, of, uh, the proportion of space, um, of the other restaurants on the avenue, for this space in particular, the restaurateurs that came in, and they were the ones that would have had to put the money into it, uh, to, to lease it and make it their own, they all wanted more room for more tables.
And can I ask why, um, you have a parking lot, um, you haven't arranged that the parking lot, you can use it like going through the back door, that some way that parking lot can be accessible to people who want to patronize the restaurant? Is there some reason why? It seems that, that you're not utilizing that parking lot for, for, um, possible customers?
Uh, there was a, um, there was a planning board resolution many years ago and it's in the package that you have in front of you that, uh, the planning board resolution said the parking lot was not to be used by customers.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Do you know why that's the case?
Uh, they didn't want that much traffic, uh, because of residential buildings around it, possibly.
Really?
Let me, let me, um, I've got all that paperwork in front of me, just give me a second and I'll, and I'll put that. Give me a second.
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question to, to me?
You have, I'm not sure how many spaces, I don't have it right in front of me, your parking lot. Um, it's a fairly sizable parking lot and it seems that, um, when I remember it, and it is, um, when you guys, your, your family was running it, I don't remember that, that there were signs and customers were using that parking lot and it doesn't seem like the building is configured so it's very easy for customers to use that parking lot. So I wondered why you're not making more use of that parking lot for customers.
Oh, right. I'm so, I'm sorry. There are thirteen spaces, uh, in the parking lot. Um, as to why customers didn't use it, uh, you know, that was the big question for my family for many years because even with signage in front of the restaurant pointing to a parking lot, uh, we had customers that were clients for, for us for twenty-plus years who didn't know they had a parking lot in the back.
All right, um, I'm sorry, I said the opposite. Um, the parking lot was exclusively for patrons of the restaurant, not for the employees. Sorry.
They told us, this is what they told us at the prior hearing, that there was a, a, a parking lot back there and it had a certain number of spaces for customers and they were, you know, in this new configuration, they would be using it for delivery and for... So wait a minute, based on what you just said, however, if it's exclusively for customers, then you would not be able to use it for the delivery trucks? You would need to go back to the planning board to
That's only when it's a restaurant. We are not putting a restaurant in.
Oh, okay.
I have a different
Uh, you're putting a small one in the front, is that not right? I thought you were gonna
That's just for takeout, yes. Just for takeout.
Um, do we receive a floor plan of the restaurant?
Yes. I can
The last time, or the
I can put that in front of you, uh, if you want me to share the screen. It's right here.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Just a second, um. It's not coming up, just a second. Here it is. Um, this is the proposed restaurant. Here, the commercial kitchen. The takeout area is in the front where the oven of the last restaurant used to be, right here where I'm starting the cursor. This is the entrance. Uh, this is the, um, place where they can sit if they want to have it there. Um, and this is the cash counter and, uh, we have walk-in boxes, we have food preparation and cooking. Uh, we have, um, an entrance.
Where's the beginning of the low, of the low ceiling? Which portion is the low ceiling?
That's gonna be easier for me to show on this because it's got a, a hatch in it. Uh, it's taking a minute to, um, regenerate. It's this area back here.
Why, why is it low? Is the building go, set back there? Is there a, an increase in the floor la-, ground level? Why is it lower?
Um, I think that, uh, this, this is, uh, this was built first up here and, um, this part's got a basement and you, from this point back, um, this part got built over time and I think the last fellow that built, um, that built this part in the back just, who know, who knows why he built it so low?
But that's, my question is, if I, in other words, from grade to the top of the roof in the front, is that higher than from grade to the top of the roof in the back?
They're different levels.
So, so the, the elevation of the building or the height of the building in the front and in the back are different heights on the outside? Not interested in the inside right now, I'm just talking about the outside.
Yes.
So there's natural physical difference in the outside, the height of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Originally, the, uh, building was three separate stores. So you have a elevated, uh, ceiling in the front facing Boston Post Road and it slopes down towards the back, uh, towards Library Lane.
Okay. This may seem like a stupid question, though, I'll ask it anyway. Why can't a dining area be seven feet, ten inches? Why is that too low for a dining area?
Uh, that's up to the restaurateur and his interior designer and everyone that came in just did not like it.
I have a question really about the economics because to me, uh, I, I don't understand why you, you had an offer for, for a rental offer, according to this study, there was a rental offer for, um, forget the ten thousand dollar one, there was a nine thousand dollar negotiated for a week, tenant refused to increase their offer above nine thousand. What happened to the nine thousand dollar a month offer?
If I can answer to that, the tenant proposed, the tenant, uh, wanted us to, uh, build out the kitchen and also have TI improvements to the dining area for him.
Okay.
So, right.
That was a cost. Okay, so that makes sense. Okay, I understand it. And then the purchase, the prospective sale for two point three million, that was, there were too many, that's the one you were saying there were too many conditions, correct?
Yeah, honestly, it was not a legitimate offer because of all the contingencies, yes.
So I did, I looked at the numbers you sent and if, and I, and I could be wrong on my, my math, although, yeah, I used it, um, but your, your expenses, um, I'll have to get out of here for a second, um, exit full screen. Um, your expenses are, what, what you submit in your application says that your expenses are eighty-nine thousand two hundred nineteen dollars for a year. That was your cost in twenty nineteen. So if you divide that by twelve, that means that in theory, if you rented it for, and then I'd have, you know, you'd have to do some math calculations, but just that alone in order to net zero with no return, if you got something like seventy-four hundred dollars a month, you would have zero profit, which is not reasonable and no one expects that. So, did you, but I don't know what the number is that would allow you a reasonable return, whether it's eight thousand or eighty-five hundred. And my question is, did you try to rent it for either of those that would give you a reasonable return, um, even if not possibly as much as you would like?
Honestly, at this point, we have been more than negotiable with any prospective tenants coming in and, uh, with Abe Abdallah, uh, his proposed use of the property, we felt, my father and I, that this was the best use and best, uh, prospect for success for a potential tenant. So, um, at this point, to answer the question, we would just want to break even, you know, obviously, and not have to bleed the money coming out of our pocket for more than, you know, a year and a half. At this point, it's, uh, it's, it's very discouraging, it's very sad, you know, because of the history that we have with the property, uh, my family in this, in this, in this town and for myself, you know, you know, I literally grew up in this location. I was born in nineteen seventy-two and my parents opened up the restaurant in nineteen seventy-two. So, uh, you know, I have a special affinity to this location, so it's, uh, it's, it's not, it's not fun. To say the least.
Uh, okay, um, applicant, do you, does the applicant, we have anything else they want to add to this, to their purchase so far, to the, to what they, to their?
I think we covered all the, uh, all the major points and I think we had, uh, the proofs necessary to, uh, to prove those points. Uh, we are not changing the neighborhood, we won't be a detriment to the neighborhood. Uh, we'll be an asset to the neighborhood.
If I may correct.
How many people, oh, sorry, do you expect to use, to, I, I thought, I, I thought you said, but I didn't see in my notes and if you did say last time, I don't recall. How many people do you expect to be using this? Not the customer base, but the employees, the people working in the kitchen, the people coming in and out to pick up for deliveries? How many people? How many employees?
Abe, are you on the line? Is Abe here, Jean?
Uh, he should be.
I'm here.
Uh, did you hear the question?
Yes, I heard the question. Um, employees wise, we have probably gonna have about fourteen, fifteen, give or take at the time of the day. And business wise, how many customers gonna be in and out? That's up in there.
Um, if I should just correct something that was said earlier, it was a special permit that had that condition on the parking that was done by this, by the zoning board, not us.
Okay, so they, right, so they wouldn't be getting the special permit anymore, so they wouldn't, it wouldn't be applicable. Right. Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant team? Okay, does anybody from the public wish to address this application?
We do have one. Glenn, I'm gonna turn your mic on.
Good evening once again, Board, One Tippet, five oh six Hill Street. A couple of things I'd like to, uh, point out. Sit-down restaurants on Boston Post Road, over the last forty years, you've lost about twenty, twenty-five of them. People do not go out to eat in that fashion anymore. You can start with the Crab Shanty on one end and Washington Arms on the other end. And over the last forty years, McQuires, another one that went out, Continental Manor was a catering hall, there was a catering hall across the, the street from them. Uh, even on the other side of the ground, Three Jalapenos, those big dining room restaurants. We used to have Tong Hui, which was another large, uh, Chinese restaurant that faded, uh, with the different dining habits in the eighties, nineties. As for the parking, people didn't, never realized that there was parking around the back because you had to go past two other buildings to go into the back to where their parking lot was. So, I as a long-time resident would know I could legally park back there. Anybody who was casually going to the restaurant never realized that you actually had legal parking, that it wasn't somebody else's parking, parking. A lot of people assumed it was the building on the corners parking lot, other people assumed it was apartments in the back, it was their parking. So unless you were very familiar, a regular customer, you didn't know that you could go and, and park in the rear. The third thing is, as you were bringing up, you know, what you need to make a profit, understand, that doesn't include that if you get a tenant in there, that your building maintenance goes up substantially and you are going to have long-time capital costs. At some point, you have to put a new roof on, at some time you have to do the windows. And then even as you have a tenant, you, you have to do fans, you have to do, uh, rugs, you have to, there's a lot of indoor maintenance, there's a lot of maintenance on a property like that that has to be done that doesn't necessarily reflect in what expenses are in any given year. So you would have, you would have to really look at, usually what you do is you would take the value, like if I took the value of my house, I'd have to say, I need to spend five to ten percent of the value of the house every year to maintain it. And you would have to take that into account. What percentage value of the property would you have to spend in order to keep it in general good maintenance? You're gonna have more proposals like this, even, uh, coming out of the pandemic. If you had a dining room, they're talking about six-foot spacing and things like that. And I don't know if it's even economically feasible to be able to run a restaurant where you could only put forty people in that entire space. Maybe you can only put twenty-five people in the space. Where you could only put 40 people in that entire space. Maybe you can only put 25 people in the space you're talking about. So this is a very viable alternative to a very difficult property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. They are gonna have a takeout place. They're not gonna require a special permit?
We, we, we were figuring, this was one of the questions that we started talking about last week. Well, the question is, if they're getting a use variance, and at the end of the day, they're getting, what are they getting? It all goes to what their actual application is a use variance for. Is it a use, they might need a special permit, we talked about this, but maybe it's subsumed in the variance. Because the variance is for the use, so are we giving a variance to operate something that meets? That is what they're showing us, and if so, why do they need a special permit? Because we've already given them a variance to operate this use as it's shown in the plans. It's different when we give them a variance like for height, you know, if they need a parking variance. We're only dealing with one element. We still haven't decided that the use itself is appropriate, given the special permit standards. We are giving them a use variance, we're sort of including all that as part of it. So I don't think they need a, a, a special permit as well, because I think the use variance can. Assuming that, you know, that we give a use variance that subsumes it and gives them, these are the uses we're allowing them. I think it's all subsumed, but.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that question.
Anyway, that's my thought on it.
Yeah, you know.
And you said that, you said that we already gave them a variance, you meant we already gave them a special permit. They already.
Yes, I'm sorry. We have in the past given them a special, but the special permit wouldn't apply now anyway, because. What they're proposing is different from what they had previously gotten the special permit for. Yeah, if I said variance, I meant special permit.
All right, I, I, I think I want to know if we are. If we are required to give a special permit strictly for the takeout section. Because the takeout section, correct me if I'm wrong, the takeout section is a very small space. Okay, and most of the large space is a ghost kitchen that's gonna feed other restaurants. Am I correct?
That's correct. They're going for a manufacturing use, a variance to allow manuf, a use to.
Right, right, absolutely.
Manufacturing use.
I, I understand that. Does the, does the takeout place have its own little kitchen area?
The kitchen that serves the whole place makes the food that a little from each. Cooking area gets used at the takeout.
Okay.
If you take a look at the use of manufacturing, manufacturing oftentimes has a retail. Component where they sell things that they make in the factory. And our takeout place is just a retail aspect of selling what we're manufacturing.
Okay. And actually, that part is, is you don't even need a use variance for in our code. There was something about the size that you were devoting for it, but the general purpose of having manufacturing and then selling on site. Is something that's in our code. It was just the proportions and all, but, but it's the fact that. It's a ghost chicken to supply to others that, that makes a difference.
No, I don't think we need the special permit at all. We're just selling products that we make on the site.
Do, will this, would it need a, a site plan since it's changing use? When does it, a site plan?
You need increasingly amount of parking that you're needing.
Well, it's, it's if it increased, if you increase, if you change the use and that increases the requirements under the code. And that's any of the requirements under the code. So that's, you know, parking, circulation, drainage. All of those site type of issues, yeah.
Did they deal, did they tell us what part, I mean, did we consider, did we look at what parking would be needed for this manufacturing use? I don't know that we've looked, thought about that. They certainly, I don't, I've seen anything in the application.
This, in this district, no parking is needed.
For commercial use. What about for manufacturing use? How do we deal with that?
That's a whole other issue.
Right.
I'd like to address myself to that. Restaurants have one of the highest proportions of square footage to parking requirement of all the uses in your zoning code. And manufacturing has close to the least, they are not equivalent, so where we are is we would be less.
If I, if I may, the parking code states that. Other than residence uses in the C1 district, parking is not required.
Okay, so it's not required anyway, so it's moot. Okay.
Is this C1 or C2? Greg?
C2, C2. If I said C1, I'm sorry, I meant C2.
So if this isn't a permitted use, I think we need to address it if we decide to give them the variance. I think we need to address the parking question just because. While they're not required in the C2 for any permitted use, this isn't a permitted use, so once we're giving them a variance, I think we just probably have to address that. As well. That's all, that's it.
Will there, I understand you're, you're selling some food products. Will there be seating? Will there be places people waited on? Will there be tables in the front where people are gonna eat their orders?
There are, there's space for six people to sit, six or. Like, six or eight people to sit and eat. Family style. There's not individual tables, there's not, there's not service to them, there's not waiters. They can have their takeout and eat. And someone will clean up after them. And the, about the parking, it didn't say parking only for permitted uses is not required. It said parking. Is not required for anything except residential. Isn't that what you said, Greg?
I can read straight from the code. It says, other than for residence uses under section 34250. This article shall not apply to the C2 Central Commercial District, and it's the parking article.
Okay, so the parking.
Doesn't apply.
It's just permitted, it's not absolving just permitted uses, it's every use except residential. So we don't need a variance for the parking at all.
I wasn't suggesting you get a separate variance for the parking. I wasn't saying that. I was just saying that we might have to address it, but it sounds like we don't. Anybody else on the board have anything they want to ask, discuss today? Otherwise. Should we close? Is there anything, any more information you want? Otherwise, I think we can close. Otherwise, do we want to close the hearing? Anybody?
I'm fine with closing.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Doug?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Megan, Abby?
Yes.
Yes, and I thought yes as well. So this is closed. And we may, we will not be discussing it tonight. Hopefully, presumably, we will have to discuss it at the next meeting, because then we have August, then we have the summer. You know, whatever we're doing over the summer. So, but we will see about what happens. But anyway, this is closed. Okay. Next item is application, is number, item four on the public hearing calendar. Application 382019 in Travia, 1330 Mamaroneck Avenue.
Again, just raise your hand. Got Justin, okay, Mike. I'm just gonna unmute you, but if one of you wants to share plans, just let me know and I can move you to panels.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Thatcher. I'm on your record for the, in Travia Home. Hope you can all hear me just fine. Okay, great, great. Okay, so I'll make a brief for you. What we're looking to do is, as, as the homeowner and his family have grown, they have three kids who are obviously getting older. They needed some more space, you know, in their home. So we're looking to do a master bedroom and family room addition on top of what is an existing first floor. With a roof deck, a flat roof deck that was there. So we're looking to build on top of that. The existing home and the, on both sides and as well as that first floor piece on the back. Is already over the setback. It's over the existing setback. The setback's six feet and we. The, the setback is six feet and the existing structure is 3.8 off the property line. So we're not trying to encroach to the property line any further. Than what is already existing, okay? So we're just going simply on top of the existing first floor. We're not encroaching anywhere near on the left side of the home, which is already over the setback. I understand that. It's eight feet and the existing house is 6.7, but that is. Irregardless to us, the addition has nothing to do with that setback line. Also, with the addition. The FAR, we went over by 0.4%. So, you know, although very minor, I still wanted to have that in there to, to show, you know, that is the calculation. So it's just 0.4 of a percent. We spoke with the neighbors to that right side where their homes are nowhere near the property line. And they actually wrote a letter, which was included with the package, that they're both okay with that. They saw the plans and were okay with everything else. The, the design is to look like as if it was always there. And as far as to the neighbor to the rear of the yard is about 100 feet away. So again, nowhere near the addition. So that's what we're looking for tonight is mainly just to approve the variances. So we could build on top of the existing first floor wall on that side.
Just to clarify something, you know, I climbed up those steps and just looked at the, you're very close to the prop, you're incredibly close to the property on the left. But the property on the right, you got the neighbors on the right to.
They both wrote letters, yes, approval.
I could, because they had a different address, I didn't know where they were in relation to you.
Correct, yes, they are there, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I do. Do you have plans to share with us or I'll just refer to them? I just want to make sure everybody's looking at the same thing.
I just promoted you to a panelist, so you can share your screen if you so choose.
If you could show us your intention for the interior of the first floor.
I think he may have gotten kicked out when I did that. Great.
Oops.
Wonderful.
They, he submitted, we have the plans in the application, Meg.
Yeah, that's fine. I thought it might be, I just want everybody, it's kind of hard when we're not.
No, no, I know, I just, but at least, if we can't, if he can't come back, they're there.
He's, he's back online, then at least he can hear us and, and. So my question is, on the existing first floor. I see a dining room with some dotted lines and then I see a space that doesn't have a name. Most of the rooms have a name and I wondered, what is that room?
Sorry, he, he got bumped off again because I tried to promote him again, but this time I'll just have him talk. And when he comes back in. Okay. Sorry, Mike, it seems like you keep getting booted off when I try to.
Yeah, I got booted off twice, but you got me now.
Yeah, but you won't be able to share your screen. It's, there's technical glitch.
Okay, sorry about that.
So I'll ask my question without you share. I'll just refer to the plan and you can, and you can help us out. On the, on the first floor, the existing first floor, I see. A space that you're playing dining and then it has dotted lines and then there's a square that doesn't have a title in it. What is that room used for?
On the, oh, that used to be an old kitchen, okay? And then that was when they reverted to a single family home and the cooking utens, appliances were all taken out of there.
Okay, so it kind of looks like the one on the upstairs, so it looks like it still has a sink and a refrigerator.
It does have, it does have those, yes.
Yeah, does it have any tabletop appliances in there?
No.
No microwave, nothing. You don't prepare any?
When I had my meeting with them, there's no tabletop appliance, as far as like microwave, no, it's countertop.
Okay, so when you say dining, it just happens to be dining, the food comes from upstairs?
Yeah, they, they cook upstairs.
Okay. And you have separate entrances to both the first floor and the, and the downstairs floor. And I thought, when I, I, I did some research and looked, I thought, you get mail that says unit one and unit two to these units?
I don't live there. I, I don't know as far as. I'm, I'm just, the drawings.
I see.
Well, the, Meg, the, the, the plans show that it was once, it was a one family, then it went to a two family. And then it went back to a one family, so my, you know, they could be getting. Mail, you know, some things never go out, you know, you get.
Sure, and I see that it went from a one fam, it went from a two family, it was a permitted two family to a one family because they unplugged the stove. That's what it says on the seal. That was what they needed to do to make no other adjustments. And when I, the, I'm gonna hold up my, my plans. I'm looking at plans that you gave us for the application and then the application was. I guess removed because of the FAR, you had, you had a new application because you wanted to add the FAR. But in, in this one, so it's not that old, it's about the same date, it's July 16th, 2019. It shows some burners on the first floor, actually.
Yes, there was, the, the reason why, and that was also my fault, I, these clients of mine have been my clients for over 12 years. And when I used that plan, it was mistakenly, I pulled that plan from an older project. So that I could have it for this project, but I didn't realize that the stove was still in the drawing. So when I did.
That's where, that's where the stove was. So this used to be a kitchen. And it looks like the refrigerator and the sink are still there, but you took the stove out.
Correct, correct.
And it's all, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Meg, finish. No, no.
And, and so it's all one family living upstairs and downstairs? Is it adult people, kids?
Yes, her parents also live with them. So there's, there's, there's four adults and three kids.
I, I said adults, two sets of adults and kids with a.
I think we'd want to clarify, if we give them whatever relief we give them, we would want to make it clear that there was, this was one. Unit only, they couldn't have separate units, they couldn't have a separate apartment here. We have to just be very clear what we're giving them.
Right, there is no separate apartment, there's no separate doorway to block them off or anything like that.
It's like there is in the front, when you go through the front door, it kind of looks like it's the front door. You can close those doors to the downstairs and just go upstairs. It does look like there could be privacy there.
Those are an interior door, there's no locks on them, no nothing as far.
Yeah, but there are interior doors and then you have a separate entrance to the downstairs through a mudroom in the back. And you also have the stairs that go up to the top. So I'm just finding a lot of similarities in this to another application that we're looking at. That a stove was disconnected, that there are, this one actually has two separate exterior entrances. It doesn't share one common entrance. It doesn't have to share one common entrance. And there's actually, it's like a family with two adults or is it the, 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 the parents are there? Do they pay rent for it or do they just live for free in the house?
As far as I know, they live for free. I mean, as being my longtime clients, they don't pay rent.
We have the person who owns the house to tell us this. So are these rumor or borders or they're just people hanging out?
No, it's family.
I, I, maybe if you're, you're the designer, maybe if we could hear from, from a family member. The owner of the house.
Justin, you should be able to speak.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, hi, yeah, it's my parents living with us. We, they're, you know, into their 70s and. They, they're living with us, so.
So they come downstairs and they cook in your kitchen or you? So they come downstairs and, and they cook in your kitchen or you...
Our kitchen, our kitchen is upstairs, um, and, I mean, obviously not right now, but I work full-time out of the house and, um, my mother prepares a lot of the meals upstairs during the week because I'm not home at that time, um, so she just cooks for all of us. Um, and... They sleep downstairs and they still have a living space downstairs, you know, but, um, we didn't need both kitchens and we never intend to rent, so that's why we didn't feel the need to have the kitchen downstairs. We did not rip out cabinets and, you know, we still utilize more than one refrigerator, most houses do, um, but it's my parents, it's, that's who lives here with us, it's a second generation family living situation.
Okay, and I'm surprised that, when it was, it was a two-family for a while, when did it go from a two-family to a single family? I'm sorry, what was the year?
Um, I actually don't know what year we applied for that, but it was, it, you know, we had, we did what we, we applied for it, we went through the town, we had the inspections, I mean, we went through all the right channels to get it done, but I don't, it was a few years ago, maybe?
So I'm just looking, you just have the two parking spots, um, so I wonder how you handled things when it was a two-family, because there's only two spots.
Um, we, there's three parking spots, um, yeah. And actually, well, and we're technically Mamarone Avenue, so we can park in front of the house as well, but, um, the house, the house never really, it only functioned as like a two-family, I grew up in this house and my grandparents lived downstairs, um, and it wasn't until my grandparents passed away that my parents had tenants for a very brief time before we decided to take over the house and move in, um, so this house never truly func, I mean, we bought it as a, I guess my parents bought it as a two-family house back in the day, like seven, in 75, um, but it never, it functioned as a two-family as far as like collecting rent for just a very brief period of time. So, yes, there's still entrances downstairs, I mean, the entrance downstairs to the mudroom is actually, the mudroom in the den, you know, that all functions as my space with my children. Um, my parents kind of use the other area.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a weird setup, like Mamarone Avenue, we never use that front entrance because we have access through Crown Court, so that mudroom used to be a garage, um, we wanted access through the main level, um, you know, when, when I had kids, we, that, that's when we started working with Mike, actually, and we switched, we changed that, that was a garage and we changed it to a mudroom so we could come in downstairs.
Sure, and then I see you have a doorway, you just go up the stairs to your...
And then we just go up the stairs, yeah. Um, and then my parents, you know, are off to the left there, but...
Right, and they shut the door if they want privacy.
They can shut the door if they want privacy, but the door is almost, I mean, my kids are constant, it's just like one, I like, I can't keep them out of there. Um, so it's just, yeah, we share the mechanical room, we share the laundry room, we function as a single family home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, it really actually sounds like such a wonderful family living arrangement over so many years and generations. Um, in terms of the locks, is there, are there, on the outer, all the outer doors, is it just one lock for all the outer doors or does each door have a separate key, different lock?
Like a different set of keys for each door?
No, I mean, the, can you open the, can you open all the outer doors with one key or does each outer door have a unique key?
Um, all the doors are operated by one key except for, there's one door where the porch is, oh no, the upstairs one too? A sliding door?
Yeah, it's like an old door.
It's an old door, yeah, so there's, this is some of the stuff that we need to...
That'll come out.
So where the deck, the deck used to be, there's that sliding door, we don't use that as an entrance anymore because we put that mudroom in, so we never changed the lock on that door. So when you go, like where we want to build is, we used to have like a, a deck there. Um, we had an issue with water and we had to pull up the deck and we never put deck back down, it's just basically like rooftop, um, we don't ever enter the home through that way anymore, but there is a lock on that door, I don't even, I don't, I don't even think I have, it, when we do the addition, it would come out, but, um, yeah, I don't even think I, I don't know where my key is, Justin has a key.
When you, when you do the addition, then you'll put a good, good exterior...
Well, you would have, that door wouldn't, so that would be like the doors that would go from our current dining room area into the new, like, den area.
It won't be exterior.
It wouldn't go outside, it wouldn't be external anymore, yeah.
Those will be interior French doors.
Yeah.
And then I guess my other question is, in the...
Greta, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Greta, so you're going to have stairs with a door at the top of the lock, though?
Yes, but it would, but that'll be a different, uh, yes, so that, but that wouldn't be to the same set of doors, right? It would be a new door that we would have.
Yes, I'm sure. Sorry, Greta, I'm sorry.
Okay, and that would then be with the same uniform key?
Right, we can, I guess, I don't know if we'd have to replace all the locks?
No, the, the new locks, we can actually have them keyed all alike.
Okay.
Um, I guess, and then my, just my other question, in terms of the, the former kitchen, which has the refrigerator and the sink, but the burners had been removed, what other kitchen-like items are in that old kitchen area? Is there, you know, is there a microwave, is there a toaster oven, is there a coffee pot? What other items are there, there?
They have a coffee pot, um, they, you know, they have, they're, like I said, the cabinets are still up, the refrigerator's there, the sink is there.
Is, is there a microwave or a toaster?
It looks like a dishwasher, do you have a dishwasher downstairs too?
The dishwasher is there.
It's still there, probably, yeah, it's been there.
What about microwave or toaster oven?
No, they, my mother doesn't use a microwave.
Or toaster oven?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, anyone from the public wish to address this application?
I'm not seeing anyone.
All right, does anyone, what does any of the board members want to do? If you have no more questions, you don't want any additional information, does anyone, do you want to close?
I recommend we close.
So you're making a motion to close, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, Doug?
Yes.
Greta?
Yep.
Meg?
Yes.
Abby?
Yep.
And I vote yes, okay, this is closed, um, we'll get to it as soon as we can.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last public hearing application is, oh, sorry, there are two more, I forgot one, um, is application 8A 2020 Mora 619 Third Street for a variance. Uh, can you, Greg, yeah?
Hi, Mark Musticato for Mr. and Mrs. Mora, the architect for the project. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, Greg, do you want me to, do you want to let me share the screen or you have an issue with that?
Should be able to now.
You look like you lost him again.
No, he should pop back up, yeah.
Okay, uh, okay, so again, Mark Musticato from Mr. and Mrs. Mora for the property at 619 Third Street, it's an existing two-family house, um, in the R2F district, so Mr. Mora did a renovation of the house, uh, a few, number of years ago, and in that, in that renovation, they added this, these steps to this porch, this porch and these steps. Um, I'm going to go to a photo here, this is the front of the existing house.
You have to share your screen for us to see it.
I'm sorry?
You'd have to share your screen for everyone to see it.
I thought, oh, there we are, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I pressed it. Okay, you see that now, in front of the house?
No.
No?
No.
You don't see the pictures of, of the house?
Uh, okay, you just started sharing.
Okay.
Yeah, they came up now.
Okay, so this is the front of the existing house, uh, again, there's a renovation addition done and, um, Mr. Mora is sort of frankly the victim of a series of missteps that really aren't his own fault, in my opinion, but, um, the original plans that he had done for this addition showed a number of steps, it showed, um, let me see if I can find, it showed 10 steps, basically. Um, if you look at the site plan, hold on, if you look at the site plan, this is the site plan of the original, the plans that were done for this renovation, and if you look at the elevation difference between the first floor, and this is outlined in my letter to you, between the first floor and this porch and the driveway, the minimum number of steps you could have, my code legally is 13 steps to, to confly with it with maximum height for a step, and this showed 10, so it just didn't work. You would have been, if you built the number of steps that were on this plan, at the end of the steps, it would have been about 30 inches, 24 inches, 30 inches above the ground. So Mr. Mora built the steps with the required number of steps he would need to basically get to the driveway elevation. Uh, it was inspected by the building department, it was approved by the building department, he was issued a CO, and then subsequently, recently, this, basically this past year, within the past year, um, I guess it came to light that these steps encroach into the front setback beyond the front of the house and he was issued a violation, um, and now the need to remedy this in order to, in a variance in order to remedy this. Mora, there's no really, there's nothing else he can actually do, this is the only alternative he has really is to come to this board and seek relief for these steps that were built and approved and issued a CO and then that CO was basically taken back.
Mark, when was that CO issued?
Um, yeah, I mean, I have to, I have to scroll through the application here, Frank, you would happen to have that in your records, would you?
I, I don't have those records in front of me, but I would say, within the last two years.
Okay, yes, within the last two years, I think that's correct. Uh, violation certificates.
No.
No, that is, this is the CO for that too, uh, basically two years ago, March of 2018.
2018, okay. So what, what ended up happening, you got a CFO based on the plans that you submitted and that we built to, and you got a CFO and now you just got cited for violating the code.
Yes, because there's more steps in reality and existence than were on that, that original plan.
Right, the front yard setback was already pre-existed by the house that was there and their proposed plan, when they were, you know, going for the building permit, the steps showed it back further, you know, not, not coming past that front yard, the, uh, front structure. As they did go past it. Right, you were there? Excuse me? You were there two years ago? Yes, yes, yes.
I believe this came to light when, uh, the applicant, the homeowner came to us with an application to subdivide the property and we were taking a look at the house that was built and I mentioned how, uh, it looked like the stairs were intruding into the front yard, so I think that's why it came to light, because they were here before us, a different application.
That's correct.
What normally happens when a new house or a renovation like this has, has gone? Um, isn't there something in the village code that you, you submit an as-built?
They did.
For Frank, did you, do you, do you ask for an as-built so you could compare it next to the plans and so you don't get the CFO and if you see anything that went fun, funny, you could send them to, to get a variance then?
That's correct, that's correct, this was missed, there's no doubt about it, um, you know, uh, multiple people made inspections on this house, but I was one of them and I did do the final CO for this house, but I did realize that there was a problem there with those front steps, both, both sets of stairs, so, and that's why they're here before the board.
Yes. So, I mean, basically that's our situation, obviously it's the minimum variance that's going to relieve their hardship, there really is not another alternative, uh, nothing was done in any kind of malicious manner or do something that shouldn't have been done and unfortunately it was just missed.
So, we're talking about more than three feet. Construction of front stairs is...
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just reading, uh, so there's a delta difference of, uh, 12.7 feet?
Yes. Yeah, there's, there's basically three more steps than were on that original plan.
Yeah, but the, the building...
The building is non-conforming to begin with.
Right, no, that's what I'm thinking, I'm looking at the, at that building and that building looks like it's only, hold on a second.
It's like 12 and a half feet from the property line.
12 and a half feet from the property line, right?
Yes, 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 it's an existing non-conforming building.
So that one, that, that, that first set of stairs on, on that, on that side is what, in line with the building, almost?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
Yeah, and on the other side it's...
It's slightly closer, it's 12.4.
You need those, you need those, yeah, that's because the property line is probably not, uh, square.
I don't know if the house is parallel to the property line, frankly.
Yeah.
I meant, both stairs were increasing the non-conformity, so they needed a variance because they were increasing the non-conformity of the, of the existing building.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, but, okay.
So happy to answer any other questions?
Anybody, anybody on the board have any other questions?
No.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Greta, are you, are you speaking, Greta? You're on mute.
Um, so the existing non-conformity is increased by just a, by a couple inches? I mean, what's the...
Basically, yes, basically.
Is that right? We're talking two inches, is that what really we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody has raised their hand to make a comment.
Okay, does anybody on the board need anything additional? Should we close?
I think we should close.
Okay, do you want to make that motion, Doug, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Abby?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Doug?
Uh, yes.
And I vote yes, so this application is closed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and now the last public hearing is NSP 2020 Brereton for Project Journey, 108 Mamarone Avenue, a special permit.
Um, if you could just raise your hand so I can unmute you. Okay, Leo, perfect. Yes.
Screen sharing's on too, Greg.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Leo Napier with the law from Harfness, Kraut &amp; Pearlstein for the applicant. The application before you is fairly straightforward. There's no proposed changes to the footprint of the structure at all, it'd be limited to interior renovations and light change to the storefront, just simply relocating the door. The applicant is proposing to occupy the space that's presently occupied by Pinot's Palette with a shred 415, which is essentially a class-based boutique physical operations. It focuses largely on treadmills and then floor exercises. And so before you is the first floor plan, which would be the exercise areas with the restroom and a small office space or entryway area there. And then the basements would be restrooms, locker rooms, as well as some storage space and mechanicals. There, there's really not much else to the application, so I'm happy to address any questions of the board or touch on anything else you'd like to speak about.
It looks like there are 13, I don't know, you have mats? I'm not sure what these things are. Are they mats?
I believe those are little step-up, like steps kind of thing, for step exercise.
So does this mean that each class has 13 students?
I believe the operation is they alternate between the treadmills and the, the floor exercises, so the actual operator, I believe, is on the call too, Greg. I don't know if you see Joe Brereton. I don't know if they do, they have people using the treadmills and the floor at the same time and they alternate, or if it's just one thing in use at a time.
Yeah, this is Joe Brereton, and I appreciate everyone's time. Leo, you are correct, they're rotating between, so there are 26 to 28 people in the studio. We're figuring out final spacing, but 28 would be the max in the studio. So the treadmills and the floor, which are step-up benches, would be occupied at the same time they switch throughout the class.
And how long is a class, an hour?
60 minutes, correct.
So, and, and what we, what are your proposed hours?
The first class would be between 5:30 and 6:00 AM. The 5:30 class, if we decide to do it, would be a 30-minute express class. And then you'd have a class at 6:15, 7:30, 8:45, and then not again until 4:30 in the evening. And it would go 4:30, 5:45, 7:00 PM, and 8:15.
And the same hours on the weekend, or?
Weekends would be slightly different. On a Saturday, you would start at 7:00, 7:00 PM. You would, your last class midday would be 1 o'clock, and then there'd be a break, and there'd be one class at 4:00 PM. And then Sunday, you're done. The first class would be 7:00 AM, the last class would be finished by 2:00 PM.
So you're talking 56 people coming and going every, every hour that you're in operation?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's that 15-minute transition period between classes to clean and move people in and out.
Robin, that would, that would be at max capacity though also, which I, I don't know that in reality you're going to have, every class is going to be maxed out like that.
Sure, that's what you'd like, yes, and you're nice and successful.
Sure, sure, but we're profitable at 25% capacity.
Okay. And do you have windows that open up or doors? Usually, a lot of times when we speak to somebody in this situation, we ask if you're going to be playing music or having amplified voices, and if you could keep your windows and doors closed whenever you're having amplified sound.
Yeah, so correct. The only windows to the studio space that's playing the music are in the storefront, but those do not open. And then there's sound continuation in the walls to help minimize the sound. The wall against the, the treadmills, there's an alleyway on the outside of that, so it's not up against any other building. And there's nothing obviously above the studio either. But we do put in soundproofing on the roof of the studio itself, so there'll be drop ceiling in there to eliminate the sound from bouncing around.
And I would just, if, if I may, Meg, I would just note for the board that the property, or this, this portion of the property is actually owned by the, the same property owner, and on the same lot, there's a residential development in the rear. So clearly, he's going to have an interest in not having any kind of noise pollution and noise attenuation, so his tenants and residents aren't complaining to him.
Yeah, and I believe the current Pinot's Palette has a, a sound system in there and plays music during their business hours.
Somehow, I just don't think that they're going to play it as loud as on the wall, and that's on my right, when I'm looking, when we're looking at the screen on the right there, is there another building that, you know, behind the stairs?
Behind the stairs? No, that's the apartment complex that Leo was referencing. That, that empty space is a courtyard.
Okay.
It's a through lot. So this is the other building back here.
So if we should grant this permit, you wouldn't have a problem if we told you had to keep the doors closed while you were in operation and?
Absolutely, yeah, correct.
Anybody else on the board have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Okay, does anybody from the public wish to address this application?
I am not, oh, there is, there is actually, okay, Glenn, you're on.
Good evening, once again. I would just like to point out that the location of where they're looking to place this business and the hours that they are proposing is actually probably the least used part of Mamaroneck Avenue. In fact, across the street, you have the bank, which has been out of business for whatever, 20 years. You have the historian's office, and then you have Village Hall, which I would assume doesn't start to get busy until 9 o'clock, and they're out of there 4 or 5 o'clock. So the hours that they are looking to run the gym actually kind of fold in very nicely with how Village Hall is used, which gives them a lot of parking directly across the street from their location. Thank you.
Let me point out to the board, since these, since this use is across the street, we brought up, there's a new synagogue across the street. So there are other uses across the street. I don't know if it's open yet, but it's
It's open, it's open. Much of the, the membership of that, of that synagogue probably walks.
On Saturdays.
On Saturdays.
But not on weekdays.
That's true.
Okay, anybody else from the public? Okay, anybody need any additional information from the applicant? Do we want to close this application?
I make a motion, we do so.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I don't know who that's, who said, I didn't catch his voice. Okay, so Abby?
Yep.
Meg?
Yep.
Greta?
Yep.
Doug?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, so this is closed as well. Thank you. Okay, the pub, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
So now we are getting to the one, the month the closed application that we had from the last time, which is 28/8/2019, 29/8/2019. So, did we get Betty Ann? They were supposed to submit a survey. Did they submit a survey?
So what they did submit and was provided to the board just before the last meeting were surveys for the properties, and they did show the window wells. Frank, I believe, had gone to the site.
That's correct.
Did they show the building footprint? That was a requirement.
What he showed was the six-foot offset, which was the building envelope and the window wells within the building envelope.
Okay.
So, so he did conform.
Okay.
And the shed, was the shed outside the building envelope, the shed that's in question?
The shed was not, was the shed shown? The shed was not shown on the survey.
So it's an incomplete survey.
So wait, I just want to clarify one point about the survey. Frank, does this show the building envelope?
Yeah.
It does show the building envelope, so it delineates where the building envelope is?
Yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't show the shed.
It doesn't show the shed, no.
Robin, can I ask for a point of clarification? So we're looking at some notices of, of disapproval, and he brought them to us, he wanted us to interpret them. And at the time, what if we find that these notices of disapproval were correct, and he has since remedied them, but the notice wasn't wrong to have been given the notice of disapproval? How do we find if something? I don't think they were, since, since the survey is only here now, that's a good, and it's a good question. Going back to look at exactly what the application said, so. Let's go look at the, what the application itself said. So, so as you're looking, you know, I thought with the window envelopes, it was the fact that he removed the tree, and it was the shed, and he was arguing he doesn't need a, a permit for the shed. And so we have to find on those things, but what if we find that it was perfectly fine notice of disapproval, but he, now they could decide that it's remedied, and, and I don't know what the building department then does. But how are we, are we supposed to find that they remedied something that had an appropriate notice of disapproval, or are we just supposed to think about the notice of disapproval? As I said, that's a good, I'm going back to look at, no, no, it's a good question. I, I don't, I'm going back to look at the exact language of those, of both the, the notices themselves and what he, what the applicant said. Okay, but the issue had to do with a certificate of occupancy that was revoked because it didn't comply. So we, there's a bigger, right, so the, the code enforcement tickets were, and I just, which one is open? 1017 Grove, that he was occupying the property in violation of the, of the lack of certificate of occupancy. So that was the violation. I, I, it was not, I'm sorry, Robin, I, there were other violations that were put into the application. Right, there were a few of them. 19-4301 is a tree removal. I could look through some more, I have them.
Wasn't the tree removal on 19?
The shed was one, and that didn't have to do with the occupancy. So then he also had one for revoking the occupancy. I said, just going through this. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 there's different, that's why we wanted to go back and look at them exactly, so we see what they are. So, so the violations were 194302 and 194301, or eight, and 184081. Okay, so 194301 was trees removed without approval.
Did he submit an arborist letter indicating that the tree was dead and had to be removed? That was one of the requirements.
It was something. But also, is he arguing that he never should have gotten the notice, or is he arguing that he's remedied it with that letter? So I think we all know that he didn't submit the letter at the time that the building department had requested it. So it would seem to me proper, the notice of disapproval was proper, but are we now supposed to be the judge as to whether or not something's been remedied, or?
Let me ask another question. Frank, did he satisfy all the requirements of the, of the violations that you, you issued?
So, so the primary violation were the window wells. As far as I'm concerned, they now comply. He had a fence up.
Can you withdraw the violation?
Yeah, excuse me?
Can you withdraw the violation?
For that, for the window wells, I can.
Okay.
He had a
It was for the occupancy, was for the revocation of the CO.
So, so, so the other violation was for the fence, but he removed the fence, so that's a moot question.
Right.
The shed, he, he didn't show the shed on the survey, and I'm not sure where the shed is.
Okay, so in effect, was the shed part of the violation of the certificate of occupancy?
No, the one for the occupancy was the window wells, the fence, and he had to go to the BAR for approval, and he had to get the landscaping, confirm the landscaping plan was correct. And he did, he did have proof that the landscaping plan was correct, he did go to the BAR, he did remove the fence. The one thing that was still outstanding was that he didn't have the window wells within the building envelope.
Exactly, that's right.
And now he has that.
Yes.
So in effect, he satisfied all the violations which caused the revocation of his CFO.
That's correct.
So if Frank withdraws all of those, right?
That's just one, that's just one, they were all, they all connected to one violation.
I know, no, I, I, well, wait, the, the shed.
There was several violations. Let's just talk about the one, the one for the CO is 194302. He satisfied that.
Right.
No, 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 wait a minute. The, the violation, the CFO was revoked, and the violation was occupying the property in violation of not, when you don't have a CFO. He didn't do anything about that. The, the CFO has still been revoked. It hasn't been reissued yet. What has been, what has been determined is that the basis for revoking the CFO can be withdrawn, but he hasn't done that yet, so there still is no CFO on the property.
Okay, so, but this is the question I'm asking. Frank, if he satisfied all the violations associated with his revoked CFO, you can withdraw those violations as being satisfied and issue a CFO.
That's correct, that's correct.
Why are we talking about it? Frank can do that. We don't have to do anything. He satisfied the requirements to Frank. He, he came to us, and we pushed him in the direction of satisfying the requirements. He finally agreed to satisfy, submitted the documentation for it. All Frank has to do is, is withdraw those violations and issue a certificate of occupancy.
Right, but if we're supposed to look at this, at, at the violation itself, it seemed appropriate to me that, that, that it was given and, and wrongly given, because at the time, he didn't comply with all like, he should know, and we'll find like, nope, you should have gotten that, and then what happens in the future, that's up to the building department and, and everybody else, but we don't make that determination, that's the building department, I believe.
Right, the building department makes the determination. He's asking us if, if he received these wrongly. And my answer is, my answer is, he didn't receive them wrongly, he was in violation of, of those, of those, of those items. But he corrected them. So my position is, hey, you know
We're deciding, we're deciding whether or not these were issued wrongly. And I don't think he had a letter for the tree, and I, I understand, and that was part of the landscaping plan, which is why he wasn't supposed to change anything in the landscaping plan without really good proof, so the building department required an expert letter, and I thought that was the same as the shed. It isn't a normal shed, it was outside the building envelope. And he was required by his, what he had received from the planning board, that he couldn't make any improvements, anything outside the building envelope. So I don't think that any of the violations were improper.
Right, no, I agree, all the violations were proper. I have, I have no doubt. But the question is, have they all been remedied? Because
Our question, I, I think that Meg laid it out right, and I think that's right. Our question was, he's appealing the issuance of these violations. So we would be determining whether violations properly issued, yes or no. And then I guess we could
And then I guess we could have a second question is, should they be continuing? But he didn't actually, uh, appeal that, but I think we could determine that, since there seems to be evidence that, um, but that's, but the building department hasn't made a formal determination yet, unless this is his formal determination.
Actually, I, I still think he didn't submit the letter for the tree, and he didn't do anything about the shed. So we're talking about the certificate of occupancy, it seems that he's remedied. I'm not so sure, I think it's up to the building department to decide when he's remedied these others.
That's why I said, we, we don't know, unless this was his formal determination.
But it sounds like we all agree that it was issued properly, right? Should we take a vote on that, and then?
Well, somebody make a motion, please. Let's do it separately, twenty eight eight twenty nineteen, which is ten seventeen Grove Street, does someone want to?
Go ahead.
What violation, Robin, was that one?
That is violation, um, that's the one we just read, twenty. Sorry, I just put, put it back in rubber bands. Ten seventeen is, this is not ten seventeen. Hang on a second, and I will get you the application number.
Did you get the letter for the tree, Frank?
I did not, no.
So there is no letter for the tree, so that's still an actual violation.
But that's my, but that's really Frank's, Frank's determination, it's up to him. Okay, so this is twenty eight eight twenty nineteen, so it is violations, and I'm getting the violation numbers, if you will. Um, so we have violations nineteen dash four three oh two and nineteen dash four three oh one.
That was a tree removal, and then occupancy without a C of O.
Yeah, nineteen four three oh two was the occupancy without a C of O, and nineteen four three oh one was
The tree removal.
The tree removal, right. Okay, so, did you just, and wait, we also, and nineteen, right, so did someone make a motion? Did you make a motion, Meg?
I'll make a motion.
That we deny the application, that's what you're saying?
That we're denying the application, that, um, it was proper, the, the notice of disapproval was proper for uh, nineteen four three oh two, which was occupancy without a C of. I make a motion to deny that.
And nineteen four three oh one.
Well, we're gonna, are we, do we have to do each, is all one together?
I, I don't know, I don't know why we have to do them separately if we're not making.
Okay, and I'll make a motion that nineteen four three oh one was also properly submitted, and, um, so I deny, I would deny the application. Moving to deny that. And also shit, the eighteen dash four oh eight one for the shed, that it was outside the building envelope, so the notice of disapproval was proper. So deny that.
Does someone second that?
I do.
Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Okay. Abby?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, okay, so that is.
Be sure you have all of the numbers, that wasn't just one of the houses, it's so hard to look into this application.
No, that was just the, that was just for ten seventeen Grove, that's all we just did. We didn't do ten nineteen Grove yet.
Okay.
Okay, so ten nineteen Grove is application twenty nine eight twenty nineteen. And the violations on that one are sorry, um, nineteen dash four three four six, which was for occupancy in violation of the lack of certificate of occupancy.
I think that was the only one in that house, it didn't have a tree removal.
I'm double checking, I'm double checking.
It didn't have.
House occupied without a C of O. You are there for nineteen four three four six. Yes, nineteen four three four six, that is the only one. So do you wanna make a motion with respect to, is that the application, the appeal of violation nineteen dash four three four six?
I'll move to deny the application, as I feel that violation nineteen dash four three four six was properly administered.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Abby, you're on mute.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Meg?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So this has been, his application has been denied, and those two have been completed, okay. Now, I will add, the board members, before we leave, do you want to, or not want to, it is eleven thirty five. Do you wanna take care of, um, the Intravaya, the Third Street, and/or the project journey tonight? And vote on it.
I'm, I'm okay with doing it, I don't know how it feels.
I have, I, I have, I have to say, on the project journey, let's leave, I have, wanna raise some questions I have about it, some thoughts. But I'm okay with doing the other two, if that's, if everybody's in agreement to get them done, to get them.
I do, yeah, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so let's take up, um, application thirty eight twenty nineteen Intravaya thirteen thirty Mamarone Avenue for a variance for, um, where the second, where the, there's a viola, violation, there's an increase in um, nonconformity, because there is, um, a second floor being added to a portion of the building, and the FAR is a variance of, of forty from between, a lap, is point four, point four FAR is a variance requested. Anybody wanna say anything, discuss, think about it, comment on it?
Um, the terrace is already stuck out there, so I feel like it's, it's, it is increasing the nonconformity, but over a section where, um, I always feel differently when it's a second floor on top of some of them. And the FAR is pretty de minimis, the variance.
I, I mean, it's, it's weird that they have such small side yards, given that it's a pretty decent sized property, with the deep, sort of narrow. It, it is, it is increasing, you know, it is sort of close on the right side, and this is making it taller, but if the neighbor doesn't object, and any cute people just sort of would understand that that's there, then it seems to me that this is not an issue. I don't think it's, I think it's otherwise satisfying the requirements for a variance, it isn't going to have a material impairment of the neighborhood. It isn't going to adversely affect, um, the surrounding. I'm looking for my findings. It is not going to, um, it's not substantial, I don't think will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. All variances are self-created. It, it's not an undesirable change, I, I think it's okay, anybody else have any thoughts before we move on?
I don't have any objections to it, at all.
I'll make the motion, since it's simplest this way, I think I make a motion to grant the variance as shown in the plans. Um, I do not think that an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood, because the buildings in this area, they're mostly two-story buildings anyway, um, it's not, that's not increasing the footprint. Um, it's making it a cool story throughout the building, which other buildings in the neighborhood are. Uh, there's no other benefit that can be achieved that's feasible, because any other increase in any other increase in size would require a whole reconfiguration, take up more land, which would be actually a bigger impairment of the, because there would be a lot more impervious surface, that would be worse for the neighborhood. It is not substantial, won't have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, again, as discussed above. And while it is self-created, because they want to enlarge. They didn't create the actual condition of the, they didn't create the existing non-conforming condition of the house, which they are trying to meet with. I would ought to put, I'll put a couple of conditions on, which are, is that this can only be a one-family house. That, uh, they cannot create a separate locked doorway up to the second floor, since we're raising these issues now. And see, that's, to me, the big ones, if anybody else wants to add anything else, or any other.
I think that covers it.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Has anyone ever seconded something and then voted no?
What?
I, I just asked a question, anyone ever seconded something?
No, but I, I voted through the formal process, I don't want to have any issues.
There are, I, I've been in some proceedings, not in a ZVA proceeding, but I've been in proceedings where people pushed it to a vote, and then voted no.
Cause they're seconding just to get it on the, if we, if we were much more formal, and we really were complying with Robert's Rules of Order, you do see that, because people vote, that you have to get the motion on the floor in order to vote on it, so you can deny it, never put on the floor, you never push.
Other people to finally make a decision or make a vote.
Right, um, okay, so, and the, and the other one we will vote on tonight is application eight eight twenty twenty Mora for six nineteen Third Street, which is a variance for, to, for the front steps, which have a two-inch, more or less, variance, because they were constructed as need, as required by the code, any discuss, anybody wanna discuss or make a motion?
It seems pretty minimal to me.
I, I have no, no issue with this, you know, giving it to them, you know, we're talking, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's the width of a, a form, a two-by-four.
Somebody wanna make a motion, please?
I make a motion that we, uh, grant the variance.
Okay, for what, for what purposes, for what reasons, Doug?
Uh.
Is it significant?
No. It's not significant, there's no impact on the neighborhood.
The benefits thought can't be achieved by any other means, because the steps are there, and they, they.
They exist already, okay, and that if you took the steps out, they'd have to jump thirty inches down to land in the driveway.
I second.
Okay, uh, Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. This is it, we will, and I, I mean, I, I can discuss, if you wanna discuss the project journey, but I do wanna raise a concern that I have about it.
Which one's that?
And you, do you wanna raise it now, or you have to do?
I don't have to many research, I'm happy, if you wanna discuss it now, we can discuss it now. We are adding fifty-six people every hour in the mo, in the morning, I don't think it's a big deal, I mean, you know, six o'clock in the morning, not a lot of people on Mamarone Avenue, except the health club next door. Right, the gym next door, the, the, whatever it is, yoga studio next door. But it's six o'clock.
But I don't think, oh.
Right next door to the yoga studio.
You know, five AM, six AM, it's not an issue.
Right.
Okay, you know, when you start getting.
But to me, we're giving a special permit for use that's gonna have fifty-six, potentially fifty-six people coming to the avenue between six and nine o'clock at night.
Right, well, see, that's an issue.
That's my concern.
And the other issue is, the other issue is between, uh, between eleven thirty and two thirty during the day.
Guys, there's not gonna be any parking issues for the foreseeable future of Mamarone Avenue.
But they're not gonna be operating for the foreseeable future, it's a gym.
When the movie theater came before us, and I raised issues with the parking, and I was, it was pretty much told to me that there's the big parking lot, it's in the C two, we don't look at parking. And, and, so it could be, some people thought that there's significant parking back there, and there was enough, but I was actually told not even, we're not gonna assess that, we're not gonna analyze that. And I was saying, you have a couple of screenings at the same time, you're bringing in like, how many hundred people, and they're all gonna leave at the same time, that that was gonna be a detrimental impact. So I'm surprised that you're raising it now, because it seemed at the time, I'm not sure if it was you, or who, but it seemed to be everyone else on the board said, we don't discuss parking and C two.
Well, I'm not raising the issue of parking or C two, I'm raising the issue of traffic. Okay?
I was raising, when people all go to the movies at the same time, and a hundred and twenty people all leave the movie theater at the same time.
I wa, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the movie theater at all, so uh, all I can talk about is what I think the traffic, you know, and Abby, you know, you're right, right now, the avenue is not, there's gonna be not a lot of foot, traffic going through there, but that's not gonna last forever.
Kinda lasts for a couple of years, probably.
I don't know about that.
I just gotta go in.
Nothing's opened, but remember, the gym can't open yet, so when the gym can reopen, will, there, there, the gym isn't re, being, gonna be allowed to reopen sooner than a lot of the other uses on the avenue, there's no, I mean.
I don't think you're gonna see a lot more retail stores, where you just have like, eight people at a time going places, or banks, that you know, I have, I have real empathy for Yum-Len to the, the, the place there, I think it's pretty hard to fill some of these spaces, so. I have a since there is a lot of parking lots in the area, if there wasn't that, if you're in a neighborhood, I'd have a much different feeling about it. And I realize, I realize that there are people in residences there, um, but they did buy it in a C two, it's a commercial area, it's not even bordering a commercial area, they are smack in the commercial area, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of parking right there, Meg, to your point, too, so.
No, you know, I, it's, it's not the parking, I, you know, I'm not concerned, they, we can't even address parking in C two. So the bigger issue is, you know, it's just the traffic. And if that movie theater goes in, and you got stuff going on in that gym till nine o'clock at night, and those, and those theaters are going, and you got, right, a hundred people coming out of there. Hey. And you got the restaurants. It's gonna be a lot of traffic.
That they said that they're profitable with twenty-five percent, so, um, I didn't, you know.
I, I think they said in the, um, somewhere in the papers, I have my notes saying, they, they expect it to be fifty percent full. So this fifty-six may be really an inflated number.
Well, they geared it up for fifty-six, that's the maximum, and may probably, will probably maybe build up to that, we don't know that answer. Okay, but if it's geared for fifty-six, even if you take seventy-five percent of that, that's a lot of people.
Um, I just wanna say, you can't equate every use, because I wanna point out that the standard for clubs and recreational uses, which is presumably the section of the code that requires them to get a special permit, says, clubs and other recreational structures and uses shall be on lots of adequate size with sufficient parking and screaming as determined by the Board of Appeals. Doesn't say that for every use. So there is a specific, which is where it came up to, which is why I raised it. It specifically says with sufficient parking, it's not on the, so.
Yeah, but the, you know, the interesting thing about that is, if you go into our, uh, off-street parking requirements, I haven't seen anything that says fitness center.
Right, it's totally up to the board.
Right.
It's totally up to the board.
You know, so, how, I, you know, I mean, how do you view that?
Well, we, we required parking, um, we, we rate, we had a lot of discussion of how much parking we needed at, on, um.
Yeah, I know, uh, eight oh, eight oh whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
Good old Brixmore.
Right.
Okay, and, and there was a lot of discussion on that, and we, I guess we came up with, or they came up with what they would think the usage would be, and they but.
But it sounds like we all agree that parking isn't the issue in this case, that really, if the, the.
No, but there's, there's a, there's a club here, other types of clubs and nonprofit recreational uses, just as other types of clubs, right? One for each employee, plus one for each five individual family or other type of membership, or one for each two hundred square feet of floor area, or, now, but that doesn't really apply here, because there's no parking required here in the C two for any uses, and, and as someone read earlier, um, this section doesn't apply in C two, so it's not this section that applies, so it doesn't matter what the standards are. The question is, do we at the board think that the, the perm, that the use is appropriate, and do we think that there is adequate parking in the area, that this isn't gonna have any problem? And if we do, then we should grant the special permit, and if we don't, then we shouldn't, I mean, that's really what it's about. And if we don't, then we shouldn't, I mean, that's really what it's about. And that's all I was raising. I do, this is a concern, I do think that there are going to be fewer retail uses. We all know all about the retail, and that is why I didn't, you know, I wanted to leave it as a, to be discussed and we don't have to vote today, but, um, there, yes, Mamarone Avenue, like every other street everywhere, is suffering a dearth of retail uses, except, up until the, the whole COVID nineteen issue, except for restaurants, right? Mamarone Avenue had lots of restaurants, um, so. It, the question is whether or not, given that, that we think this is an appropriate use, we want to be reasonable for the village and allow for people to use their spaces. But do we have a problem with it? And if we have concerns about it, is this something we want to raise for the trustees?
Well, the bigger thing right now is, if, if you have social distancing sitting in there, they're going to be down to about a third or less for people in there.
Yeah, we don't know what the requirements are going to be for when gyms finally get to reopen.
Right, but.
I, so I think we should just focus.
I heard it's going to be whatever the social distancing is.
Right, well, that's, but if we just focus on the question of whether we all think it's appropriate, I mean, I think it's appropriate, I, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but, you know, if we all think it's, most of us think it's appropriate, maybe we could, you know.
That's the only issue, it doesn't matter whether, I mean, I think we can't figure out about, because hopefully the whole coronavirus-induced crisis will end in the reasonably near future and we can go back to some semblance of what we considered normal. No, no way of knowing, but I don't know that we can, this really hasn't been a very long time. I mean, in the scope, the scope of things, you know, you're renting a property, you're renting for years, not just a couple of months. So we don't really know, so I think we can't really consider that at the moment. We just have to assume normal, normality.
I mean, I don't, I don't object to, to the fitness center. I, I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, three, four years from now, it's still operating over there, maybe at a hundred percent capacity. And we got restaurants flying by on weekends and Saturdays or Fridays at night. And we got the movie theater kicking people out.
It's getting really late, maybe we just cable this till next month, because, are we getting closer? I'm sort of gay and I got to get up early tomorrow morning, so.
That's fine.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we, I raised the issue, we'll vote on it next week.
Well, I mean.
I have, I just, it's just something to think about, that's what I was thinking about, that's why I thought that this requires some discussion. Um, okay, so, um.
Make a motion close?
Yeah, please, or not to close, but a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, I'll second it, I, let's, Doug?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
I vote yes, okay, we are adjourned.
Good night, Greg.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah. Oh, and by the way, everyone, oh, they're gone.
Go ahead, Rock.
I was going to say, this will be my last zoning board meeting with, with everyone here because I'm switching to a new position elsewhere, so.
Are you leaving the village? Wait, wait, Greg, are you leaving the village?
Yes.
That was a mic drop right there, Mike.
Wow, Greg, best of luck to you, where are you going?
Where are you going?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I become frozen.
Where are you going?
Um, Village of Scarsdale.
Wow.
So you're taking Scar out, look at that, he wants to go off in the world or something. You'll be sorely missed.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Good luck, Greg.
Thank you.
Poor Betty Ann. I'll be lost. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.